Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our work session Monday, October 3rd, work session to order. As usual, with any meeting, we start with the invocation. We'll ask that-
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman DJ Hare, Minister Hare, if you will, give us a prayer.
Sir.
At this time, if we can stand for the prayer, following which we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. If we will bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, once again in Jesus' name, we are calling upon you to just first, just to say thank you. We thank you for taking care of our city and our communities throughout the storm. Father, we also continuing to ask for support and help for those that lost lives and property was destroyed from the south all the way up, Father. We ask you, Father, to help their minds and their spirit to make it through this very, very tough time. Lord, as we look here on our city, we ask you, Father, for common sense and good business thoughts and open-mindedness as we go about all agendas, but also especially tonight's agenda. We always, Father, seek you for understanding and seek you for guidance. And, Father, we also ask you and continue to ask you for strengthening and healing our bodies, not just ours, Fathers, but everyone that's listening to us virtually and those that are sitting in the room with us or standing in the room with us. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right. This is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim to approve the agenda. It's seconded by Councilmember Benavente. Any discussion on the motion to approve? Council, I'm not sure if the iPads are functioning or not, but motion to approve, show of hands. And Council, tonight-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I apologize. I raised my hand not to vote.
Oh, you were voting?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think you had a revision to the agenda-
Okay, yeah.
-with the removal of item 12. 4.012.
I don't have 4.012 on my copy.
Okay.
So I think it's been removed.
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Okay. Councilmember, before we go to the motion, Councilmember Banks McGlaugh. Okay, one of these items, you say? Which one? 4.09, okay. All right. So she wanted to remove the Councilmember request, so-
Pull mine, remove mine to 4.07.
All right. So what's your 4.07? 4.07, okay. All right. Well, mine was tied to the two of you all, so I guess I'll remove 4.08 as well.
Man, let's keep going.
All right. So Council, any other revisions? So Mayor Pro Tim, I want to get you to restate your motion to include the changes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the agenda, removing 4.07, 4.08, 4.09, and what was the, did-
4.012, which is removed on our copy, but was published.
Thank you.
All right. So motion to approve the agenda with the modifications as mentioned, removal of 4.07, 4.08, 4.09, and 4.012. And seconded by Councilmember Benavente. Any further discussion on that motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And Council, as I was mentioning, just for clarification, as we vote tonight, I'll call out yays and nays, just to make sure the clerk is clear. Now, we had a little ambiguity on the recognition of a few votes. All right, we'll move to item 4.01, Salvation Army. We welcome Agent Granger and his team. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'll be quick, or as quick as I can be. I'm in my fifth year here. Oh, sorry, should I say my name? Tim Granger.
Greider. I mispronounced someone.
No, no, should I? Am I supposed to say that for the record?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Timothy Ray Greider, 220 East Russell Street here in Fayetteville, 28301. Sorry, I forgot that part. I'm here tonight because we, the Salvation Army here for the Sand Hills, we have been, aside from the two-plus years of pandemic shutdown, we have been the process of trying to get our plans moving forward. We've had a lot of change of faces, certainly with our city council, with the city itself, certainly with the county as well. So I'm here tonight just to quickly summarize, if I can. Our history is that we've been here since 1887, but shelter-wise, our first shelter was 1922. And so to date, there have been a lot of revisions, changes, adjustments that's taken place now. Specifically, the programs are at 245 Alexander Street, our shelter, our food services, as well as that is, that building and facility is utilized for what you call white flag, but we call inclement weather, as well as disaster relief, which, of course, was in place Friday and Friday night during Hurricane Ian. And by the time they reached to us, it was wind and rain, but we opened in spite. We've also been in the process, these last four years, rebooting the continuum of care, as well as the coordinated entry process. And that has gone through some modifications and changes and adjustments. Again, during the pandemic, there was a pause to it, but these last few months now, that has been upstarted again, and adjustments have been made to that as well. What I wanted to be able to address were a handful of things. There does seem to be a lot of confusion in regards to what we do and do not do, and certainly a lot of, and I jokingly call them rumors, but things that are misconstrued, misspoken, misinformation, et cetera. Regarding the continuum of care, again, I'm not sure what you are aware of regarding what that is and what that means for the county, but it is a group of agencies, and we meet periodically, and the purpose is to be sure that regarding the homeless front, we are coordinating together, and that each agency that is a part of that continuum of care, they use their niche, their programs, to create a continuum care of a whole for the person. Second is the coordinated entry. I've been doing this for a long time, as I like to say, since the 1900s, 1990, and so I have done this in five different states, Salvation Army, this word, sheltering, et cetera. And in each community that I've been over these years, what I just noted to you, continuum of care and coordinated entry, has been a process, has been established in each one of those. And when that was created, structured, and here's the most important part, followed, it was a fantastic network for the homeless in general. Certainly, these last two years, which what has happened regarding pandemic, shutdowns, scale backs, et cetera, homeless went mobile, and we have seen literally thousands of people coming from other states, mostly up north, down our way. And so that has added to the joys and funds of ministry in that area for our community and how to address that. What we have seen here recently is there seems to be a transition change even again of that. So that's added to the mix of what we're all trying to deal with here in Fayetteville, as well as Cumberland County, and not just here, because our service area for the Sand Hills, Salvation Army, covers six counties and half of two others. And so as we're trying to coordinate with all of the counties, cities within, regarding homeless and within the continuum of care itself, those agencies also utilizing our shelter, our food services, for their specific case management needs, that has played into the, again, as I said earlier, the fun and joys of that ministry and trying to be able to meet everyone to some degree. The reality is that even, and I'll hit that part now, in our future plans, our goal is we will have a campus format of all of our programs and facilities at one location. We are spread out, which actually hurts and hampers our abilities to deliver any kind of services, and certainly, as we do so, new facilities. And within that shelter, we're hoping for 200 beds. So with that, and that's a normal shelter these days, 200 beds, so that's our general goal in doing so. So with that, even now with our 98 beds, we have been able to successfully, even including this past Friday, house those that come to us and work within that coordinated entry and continuum of care system. So certainly, we feel that those 200 beds will more than meet the needs in the area. I think the particular areas of confusion slash concern have been what we call drop-offs. As you know, I just noted the coordinated entry process, which is necessary, and four years ago, it was the agreement with the city, the county, and the agencies within the continuum of care that that would be the process. And so today, we're still following that, or trying to. The confusion has been when there have been those who did not follow it, or undermined it accidentally, or not, or just not being fully knowledgeable of what that process is. But the goal is that we can account for people using a system called HMIS. HMIS has been around since 1988. It has been utilized across the country, and I have used it in every place that I have been, and it is a fantastic database. It gives us the ability to truly track the who and the what within our homeless network and sort of those that we are dealing with. It gives us a great idea of from where they are coming from, what are the general needs. We can categorize that as well, too. And so as that's being tracked and followed, again, back to the coordinated entry process, that is necessary. Folks have to go through that so that, again, we can put them into the system and track them, then again, the continuum of care agencies can be identified for each and every individual that comes to us. As we're hearing news of the county, and now I see on the agenda, the city looking at a separate shelter, just know, we're not changing our plans. What we are doing as a Salvation Army, our programs and our facilities will not change. Everywhere that I have been, I say this just as a side note, where others have created shelters, city or counties, or some kind of day resource center, I see that happening, taking place here, eventually, they come to the continuum of care, or they even come to me, the Salvation Army, and say, hey, this is not going the way we need it to, can you take it over? So I've done so, but it's been on the same system as we already have in place here, the continuum of care and the coordinated entry. So again, when I stated just earlier that we would not change our plans, whoever builds a shelter or not, we are not changing. We have our programs, it works within the continuum of care, the agencies are there, it's beginning to succeed again because things are opening back up from the pandemic shutdown, scale backs. We've had a lot of mergers of agencies as well, too, and so that has worked. Number two, part of that is, we just went through that Thursday night, Friday and Friday night, again, what you call white flag, we call it inclement weather, and regarding disaster. In case you did not know, the Salvation Army Shelter is the official EOC shelter for the state, meaning the state of North Carolina, if they are in need of our shelter, they can come in and utilize us. So that adds to the augment for disasters itself, certainly not just over the Friday and Friday night, but those of you who were here for Hurricane Florence, we were here open 24/7 every day for six weeks straight to the public in general, and our programs were pushed to the side. Now, the Salvation Army itself, we are in agreements with several agencies, including the VA, and so they utilize our beds as well, too, on top of the number of beds we currently have. So again, as we are shuffling daily, weekly, monthly, and seasonally with the weather, utilizing those beds, again, our numbers, we have never maxed out our 44 beds. Let me say that again. We have never maxed out our 44 beds for inclement weather, white flag, et cetera. Number two, the other 54 beds that we have on the program side, we have never maxed those beds out. I'll say it again, we have never maxed those beds out. There are two reasons for that on both. Number one, again, this continuum of care and the coordinated entry process is not really being followed. We know there's a need, but no one is utilizing it. Number two is because of the fact that as many people will find somebody on the street, like even recently, I think there was a family of nine with special needs, and there was another family with medical issues. And then regarding drop-offs by both police and sheriff during the off-hours when coordinated entry is not open overnight, there's just a lot of confusion across the board on all of that, what it means and what we are available to do. Our shelter and our shelter staff, personnel, because we're staffed 24/7, they are not medically trained to take on medical needs. When it comes to special needs, which means mental handicap, et cetera, again, we're not trained to do that. So folks who are dropped off at our site, we need to be sure that as they are, especially in the off-hours, they are able to at least somewhat function within the shelter, because, again, our shelter has not been fully staffed during the pandemic. All of you are aware of the labor market, what it has been bringing to all of us, being fully staffed in any business, it's been no different with us here. So to try to keep open 24/7, and again, the overnight time period is the heaviest of our staffing, because that's when we need monitors the most, is overnight, that's been certainly a challenge these last two years. So again, those reasons, the ability to safely structure and staff our shelter has been affected, and that affects our abilities of what to do. I think that the biggest issue and confusion, I should say, point of confusion regarding those specific things, that there's this thought process that you can just pick anyone anywhere and drop them, and they're going to be there, and this magic number keeps coming up, 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. When it comes to our shelter, we do not have a number of days. When they go through the coordinated entry process, that's first, and so coordinated entry defines their needs. And while they may tell you that sheltering is their need, once we do the investigation from coordinated entry, we find out, no, that's not what they need. So already, there's a mishandling of that person on the street, misunderstanding, mishandling, and it delays the ability to get the right services to them immediately. Second, regarding coordinated entry process is, again, we're back to tracking. So I know that in my short time, I'm in year five, we have our, what we call repeaters, they repeat over and again, and over and again, and they really are living off the system. We know who they are because we track them, but the general public, including city, county folks, you don't know, but we do because, again, we track them within HMIS. And so literally, I jokingly say that HMIS is our God, and we are its people. And so that's the approach. We have to track it because the intention is so that we can do the correct casework service per person that comes to us. And we also find out many other stories that are correct and truthful, once we do the investigation, again, starting with coordinated entry, HMIS, versus the story that those persons are delivering to whoever brings them to our shelter. So as we do that investigation of casework, we find the real reasons, the real truth behind it, and therefore, what their real needs are, then, again, through this coordinated entry process and through the continuum of care, the agencies, we are better able to facilitate and handle them. And for many, that may mean that we are sending them back to where they came, because they had better services there, but they got upset with somebody, they've gotten in a fight with somebody, got mad, and they left. That happens often. They may have already have a home, or already may have a facility, a home, or something in our Fayetteville area. And I would say to you, I just did the stats recently, about a month ago, we ran our HMIS report, I think it was through the end of July, yes, through the end of July, and so we counted that 82% of the people who had used our facilities were not from Fayetteville, not from Cumberland County, not from North Carolina, and all of them were not even from this part of the country. All the zip codes were about north, midwest, and west. So in noting their origins, you see the impact of Fayetteville. I'm sure you know this, the 2020 census, but our metropolitan area, we're at 1 million people now in our metropolitan area. And so noting that, and it grew, they added another county to us, Harney County was added. So with that, the impact of what we're trying to do with the facilities and the limitations, really even, within our coordinated entry system, and again, with the continuum of care, it becomes more necessary than ever to follow that system and to implement it across the board so that, again, we can effectively, efficiently, especially with your budget limitations, and to meet the needs of those that come to us correctly, properly. And each and every person, they are an individual case, and each and every person that comes to us, certainly, we have to really figure out what it is, are there the genuine needs, and send them in the direction that they go. Final last point here for you is that regarding all that I've just said to date, again, for us, our plans, we just finished our program study, and within our next board meeting, we will approve that program study. Some of you actually were interviewed for that. And then the next process will be what we call the feasibility, but our nickname for that is brick and mortar. So we will begin our actual plans of what's to come, and whether or not you want to come and see or hear about that regarding your own plans within city, that's fine, but again, as far as myself and board members, that we do have a board made up of folks from across the Sand Hills region, we've already made the decision that we're going to continue forward with our plans, no matter who builds what, where, shelter-wise for the city and/or county, because we know that in the end, we will be needed, the facility will be needed, and those number of beds will be needed. So I really wanted to emphasize that part. Again, I'm not contradicting or negating, you do what you do, but for us, the Salvation Army, we are absolutely going to do what we do with our plans and facilities, and that will not change. I didn't know there was a need for questions.
Yes, sir, you did have a couple, Mr. Granger. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins here, and then I have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir. You deserve a promotion. How in the world, you're not lieutenant colonel or colonel.
Oh, no, no.
We need to chat with somebody, but I want them to leave you here because-
Yes.
-you're, we appreciate what you do very much.
Can I clip that very statement to Charlotte?
(Laughter). And you are correct, there is quite a bit of confusion, and I appreciate you sharing, plus your broadcasting, also, and I appreciate that. Appreciate you explaining the beds situation. I appreciate you explaining that your facilities, you don't plan on going anywhere.
No, sir.
You're not, and I appreciate that store on Robinson Street, that is fantastic. That helps a lot of people, and I hope it's a benefit to the Salvation Army, because it is a benefit to our, to our city. All right, so I'm going to get to my question, which is going to be how, you know, what do we need to do to improve? How can we improve? I want you to be thinking about that. As I mentioned, our day resource center, we are building up the street from you, and you probably know where it is, and we are confident the county is moving forward with their shelter. So, and we're encouraging them to be somewhere in the neighborhood, so to speak, so that if somebody does not qualify for your program, they'll have our program or they'll have the county's program. So a lot of services for our homeless.
Can I make a side note on that?
All right.
That's another point of confusion, qualifications. The only qualification we have is coordinated entry. That's it. They need to go through coordinated entry. If they do that, then they're in, because coordinated entry would then, based upon their assessment, reassign them to us. Now, we've always had, for the off-hours, the overnight, and that's where the police and the sheriff get really confused, and that is that they can bring anyone during the day and drop off. No, that's only for overnight, when coordinated entry is not open, and the weekend, and they get one night with us, and the next day, the coordinated entry is open, they have to go to coordinated entry. And again, that's intentional. So we don't have a program. Our program is to facilitate, to get into coordinated entry through the continuum of care agencies, and so that's the only qualification. I'm glad you said that, because now I was able to say it maybe another way that made more sense to everyone regarding, because that is always something that comes up continually.
And that's online, that's online, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, and if they get to us on the off-night hours, and they're dropped off, there are, there's a definition of what emergency means, and we sent that out, and I think the city manager may have received the most recent copy email with that, what that means, what emergency is defined by for the overnight drop-offs, because, again, our staffing is limited, and we're set for that. When more come on, then that changes things within our facility. But aside from that, the qualification is real simple, coordinated entry, and if they come, they're dropped off by law enforcement, what have you, overnight, meeting those emergency definitions that were defined and distributed, then in turn, they are able to have the one night to get them to coordinated entry, and the next day.
All right. Well, thank you.
Sorry for the sidebar, I did want to hit that point.
No, no, it's, it's very confusing to a lot of folks out there-
Yes, sir.
-because our problem continues to grow, a lot of it.
Yes, sir.
A lot of folks are suffering from mental illness-
Yes.
-and that's what we're, we're seeing. So we're trying to figure out with the county how we work together and also work-
And we've been communicating with the county, they with us, so I think they're going to try to coordinate the same. Whatever they end up facilitating for their shelter, it would be a benefactor working with us. That's the last term.
All right. And then I want the public to know, a lot of the situation is we're dealing with the state and DOT and the governor.
Yes, sir.
So, and I know the mayor is working that issue, and if we can get that issue resolved, we'll be able to clean up a lot of these encampments. So that, that's our goal, is to get rid of the encampments.
I understand that.
All right. Thank you so much, Major, and hopefully, one day, it'll be a lot, maybe lieutenant colonel.
I hope so, too. I'm ready for those facilities now.
And I believe that's your spouse also, that you serve with your spouse.
Yes.
So thank you both. You're both serving. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Major, thank you for coming down. As stated, this is a challenging concern for our city and our county, and thank you for explaining what it is that you do, because that helped me a lot tonight. A couple of questions. The 200-bed facility that you spoke of, that is in the planning stages?
Correct.
And has there been a location chosen?
That's coming next. That's a part of what I call the brick and mortar phase.
Okay, okay.
Because we're going to put all of our buildings together on one campus. The Salvation Army has gone back to doing that again the last 15 years now, so I've done that elsewhere, and that was very beneficial.
Okay, okay.
And it will, yes, it will require a few acres.
Yeah. When I, when I speak to some of our homeless residents, I hear concerns about financial assistance, or even those that may be renting, and I hear occasionally on several lists that I've seen, that I'll see Salvation Army's name on the list. Is that some, is that a form of support that is given to?
That is a perfect example to utilize continuum of care, coordinated entry. When those persons are in need, they come to coordinated entry, you have the story, it's quickly assessed. This isn't a day-long assessment, they do it in 15 to 20 minutes.
Right.
And they get all the facts together, and if indeed, they are about to become homeless or are homeless, even from, as you spoke of, then coordinated, we'll be able to see that, verify it with documents quickly, and then they would assign them to us.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
So that is how that works, and again, the whole organization, the system within coordinated entry especially, is on purpose, so that we don't have someone who is not in much of a need trump someone else who is in more need than they are in regards to sheltering, even if it's temporary. And then number two, those persons are immediately assigned- And then number two, those persons are immediately assigned to an agency. And I'm going to bring up connections. I think most of you know who that is, they're just a couple of blocks down the street. Another part of our reorganization is that they are strict, straight, solely a rent, utilities, and mortgage.
Okay, and that's connections.
So we coordinate with them, and they utilize their funds, their service, while we house that person for the length of time that is necessary until they can get into housing. Now, housing in this area of the state, much less Fayetteville, that's a whole nother city council meeting. But it has been incredibly difficult for that transitional.
My last question, Major, is does your organization, does a Salvation Army approach, how am I saying this? Do they do field work where they actually go and approach those that they, that are out there on the street that are homeless? Or is it always someone has to bring them to your facility?
We have a position, the name of it is Street Outreach Coordinator. It is open at the moment, but we're about to fill it. But that position does just that. And their role is to go not just in Fayetteville or Cumberland County, but all of our service area and approach the encampments that you spoke of. We had that going until the pandemic interrupted and closed the world down, and I lost some people in that process. But yes, we have a position that does that. Their role is also, again, to coordinate those who come in through coordinated entry and assess them, and then help them to get to the correct agency that they need to get them up in the app. Now regarding the encampments, you know, let's be blunt and real about this. And this has been no different in my thirty-plus years of doing this, much less, I was born and raised in Salvation Army. My parents are retired officers now. And so free will, ain't it a, you know what it says? And if they do not want to come in.
Right.
They will not come in.
Right.
And lifestyle decides that. When we have addictions, when we have alcoholism, when we have all the other things that can come with homeless in general, especially those who've been homeless for years, that creates a whole scenario of willingness on their part to come in and do that. So that is the big, and probably almost the only, but that is the biggest problem regarding taking folks from the encampments into our facility.
Okay, and my final question, this card that was passed out.
Yes, sir.
All the numbers and the contact information that I see on it, that's what, I can share that? Any of us can share that with whomever?
Well, what you want to do is, is on the QR code on the back, when you scan it, that gets you to the correct address and facility and phone number, yes.
Okay, but for those that are not using a computer or a phone to scan, are the numbers on the front of this card, can they use those?
It's in the QR code, yes. The shelter number is in there, as well as the office number. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Major, good to see you again. So I just want to recap, just to make sure I'm clear. So you have you have ninety-eight total beds, is that correct, for the current facility? And forty-four of those are used during white flag, fifty-four on your regular program side. So you said there was never a time where you, where all your beds were full?
That's correct.
Because, so what, some of the misconception that we hear when we're, council was talking about it, is that there's not enough space, it has to be a new shelter built. So what are your barriers or requirements of people who need sheltering overnight?
Again, I talked about that earlier, special needs.
Right.
We're not there to facilitate that. We can take them and hold them temporarily, absolutely yes. And if they are able to function within a shelter, the side, or within the forty-four beds, and that's actually in our dining room side, then they are able to do that, then that's not a problem. It begins up on that person, because they can freely leave too. They can come in, be brought in, and they do, many do, they'll just freely leave.
So I understand the special needs part or the mentally.
And medical as well too, and that's it.
That's it, so it's not.
And they need to go through coordinated entry.
Okay, and the other part, the other question I had, now, our coordinated entry program, you said, is not being utilized to its best potential, correct? Who runs it? C O C runs it, but who exactly is on the board of C O C?
Well, the name of it, Tasha Smith? Yeah, it's Cumberland Health app, but it's Tasha Smith. And it's right over here at the system building currently. And I believe that they are going to be your vendor going into the day resource.
So the goal is, is to push as many people through that channel so that you can, they can be.
Well, we want everyone to go through there.
Yeah.
Again, the purpose is to track so that we can have the stats and the demographic that we need to better meet what we've already got in place with our continuum of care. That's one goal. The second goal really should be, number one, that is to get them to the right agency for their genuine needs. Because there's an assessment that's done with them as they come to us.
Okay, and the last part, I wanted to say, I wanted to make sure I heard you, and you said you did not have a limit on the number of days, because that was something too.
Yes.
I had people who said, you know, once you get to a certain number of days, you have to wait six months before you can go back.
No, no, no.
You're saying that's not true.
If they come in and they begin to receive case management through the continuum of care, and they just say, I'm done, I'm leaving, and they leave, and it's not six months, it's actually a year. Not a calendar year, but a fiscal year.
This is if they don't follow the steps of the program.
If they leave on their own, number one, and then number two, and that's really leaving. When they don't follow, they're intentional, and so they're actually leaving the program. So that would be one in the same.
Okay.
So when they leave, because we've got a waiting list to get into the shelter through a controlled coordinated entry. It runs about eight to fifteen.
And your two hundred bed facility that you're looking to build, you're looking to build that here in addition? Okay, and that will service the whole six counties, so that your ninety-eight beds now incorporate people who are homeless here or in the six county service?
Again, the whole Sandhills region.
Okay.
That is correct, yeah. And as an E O C shelter, again, we're not just for Fayetteville, Cumberland. It's from here to the South Carolina line, as well as all the way around to Bladen, Sampson County, coming up around to Harnett, coming around to Moore County, back down to Hope, to Scotland, back to the South Carolina line. So it's a large area.
Big territory, yes, sir. All right, thank you. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, and then Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Greider, for being here today, and thank you for what you're doing in the community. Most of the questions have been answered. I do have a few. I know you mentioned that the beds haven't been maxed out as of yet. Can you talk about, because I just heard you mention that there's a waiting list? So what is the waiting list?
Waiting list is through coordinated entry.
Okay, so that's where the lag, I don't want to say lag, but.
Well, it's not a lag, it's that when they come in, the perfect example, and correct me when I say this wrong, Debbie, but there's a waiting list, and when you come through and you're assigned, say you go in, you're in coordinated entry, you leave a number, and we are supposed to contact that person. And if they don't answer phones, or they don't answer our communication to them, they remain there in the line until we can finally get contact with them. And usually we give them seven days from the point. And if they don't contact us back or communicate with us, then they come off the list. So most of the waiting list is that. Number two is, if it's a family of nine, we don't have a room for a family of nine. No one does in a shelter in general. And we have to wait for beds and other parts of our shelter to all open up so we can fit all nine in. So that's a part of it too.
Okay, again, I have a few. So how many are currently beds are being utilized as of Friday?
What is our number today, you mean? Well, Friday, because we only redo this Friday, we don't count it every day because of the, boy, the program rights and all that. But on Friday, the assessment was of the fifty-four program beds, not including the forty-four for white flag, because they don't count. But of the fifty-four, we had forty.
Okay, and can you walk me through the process? Because I know you mentioned with coordinating entry, if one was homeless, how do they find out about coordinated entry and how do, you know, because they're not housed with you, that's two separate, you are two separate entities. So how do they locate coordinated entry?
There's a number that's being distributed, as well as a website, as well as to hit to. And that's distributed amongst the agencies if someone needs that. And I'm not sure, you want to speak on that, Debbie, specifically, how better than what I've just said?
And I was just wondering, because I mean, I can only imagine wanting to find out that information and imagine someone being homeless, not knowing exactly who to connect with. What are some of your obstacles that you all face with the organization, and how can the city help?
Facility is our number one problem. That's it. And then number two, just again, utilizing that system that we have set in place. Because every time that someone goes in to round and comes into it not following it, then we have to stop what we're doing, assess that situation, try to figure out where to put them in that line. That could be a day, it could be an hour, it could be a week. That also causes some backup as well too. During the winter, the wait line was two hundred and something. So it's really seasonal here too. Because again, that's why I said the stats in the beginning, about the eighty-two percent. I'm wondering if the city council in general understands the impact of Fayetteville, its geographical location, I ninety-five, and the weather, certainly how many people really do homeless, really do roam, circulate the country. And so when they're coming down, and they come in, and they stop, and they implant, then that adds to the list already in place. And they're really looking for temporary versus actual case management. They're not looking to have their issues resolved, they're just looking for free, as we say, three hites and a cot, the old days. They're just looking for free and not be case management, so they add to the confusion in the list and the need as well too. Even though then they give you a story, once we investigate that story each and every time, that's what comes out.
Okay, and again, so each person, in order to be able to be sheltered at the Salvation Army, they'll have to go to, go through the coordinated entry. And that should take twenty, thirty minutes, however long.
Now, on the off hours and the weekends, they are there with us, so they get the overnight, if they're dropped off.
So whether or not they're able to come to your facility.
Yeah, so the next day, I didn't hear that part.
No, 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 go ahead.
No, the sentence you just said.
No, I was saying, so they, on a weekend, since coordinated entry is not open, they are able to stay at the Salvation Army?
Meeting the emergency definitions listed in the email that we sent to Mr. Hewitt.
Okay, I'm not sure if I received that. But so when it comes to, or maybe that's the conversation I need to have with coordinated entry, what are their stipulations, if any? Like, is there background? That's a different conversation.
I would rather they answer it, not me answer for them.
Okay.
But it's pretty much identification and then.
Background check?
Yeah, and, well, not somebody's background check, but being able to identify their genuine need. And that's really what they hold up. They'll give you a story of their own, but the reality with the real needs are in the assessment, that's what takes time with each and every person.
And how is that verified? I guess that's, again, coordinated entry as far as the verifying.
They have to prove it, that person, that client has to notate, prove it, or be able to give some kind of information that they can at least make contacts with others to verify that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, you have councilmember Mario Benevente, and then councilmember Hondros.
Okay.
And then Thompson.
How are you, sir? You said that you were having a tough time staffing. What are some of the things that the city, that you would like the city to do to help you resolve that issue, if any?
People. That's what it comes down to. Because being twenty-four seven, especially the overnight shift, that's very difficult to staff. How, finding people willing to work overnight in a shelter and all that that brings to it. And I'm not sure that anyone can really resolve that. It's just everywhere I've been, it's just finding the people who want to do that or are able to do that and are able to stay awake all night and handle a shelter overnight.
How much are you paying to do that?
Well, I don't think, HR wise, I can give you a rate, but we're well above minimum.
Myself, Ms. Councilmember McNair, and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin are working as a committee within city council to work on mental health and homelessness issues. So we'll be in touch and we'll talk more. From our perspective, the goal is not simply to clear out all the encampments around the city, like has been mentioned. I think the real issue is that we want people to actually get the help that they need so they can live, you know, the fullest lives that they can. So I just want to make sure that was clear. The purpose of the city is not simply to clear out the encampments.
And mental health has become certainly the number one issue regarding homeless of this past generation that we're currently in. So absolutely, we see that too.
Thank you, councilmember. I do want to clarify, it is not safe, no practical for encampments to be. So ultimately, we would wish that everyone, you know, gets on the correct path.
That's been my experience everywhere else, yes.
Yeah, sure. So I just wanted to clarify that, that is a desired outcome, hopefully, for them to be okay. Councilmember Hondros and Thompson, and then Jensen.
Major Greider, and Major Greider, thank you all and your whole team for what you all do, day in and day out. Y'all do the heavy lifting for us. So if I'm understanding this correctly, there's a system, it's run through continuum of care. The system's kind of tried and true, if followed as intended, it usually works. You know, just kind of taking quick notes as you were talking. So as with many other things during the pandemic, rules were kind of relaxed, and that kind of accelerated to where we are today. Is that a simplification of?
Yeah, two issues, we call them hurricanes, happened. One, our beds were reduced by the county health to half in spacing. And then how we had to handle the different demographics, single men, single women, family, family with children. That was augmented during that two-year time period. And then the other issue was, was that because of the increase due to the many homeless who were traveling down from up north, again, don't know who knows what, but you understand that many metropolitan areas were busing. Abbott and DeSantis aren't the only ones that bus people. We had many that were given bus tickets to Fayetteville. And when we did the background check and finding that out, they showed us the bus tickets. So you had that going on, we're talking a lot, probably four digits and more, what we could count. So that really impacted it during the pandemic.
Is capacity back to pre-pandemic levels as far as how many?
Yes, it's back up too. It was kind of weird, it actually went down, and not only because of the lack of beds, because we were reduced by the county health, but also because of the fact that people were just on the move constantly because of the economic situation that was going across the country.
And then there was a lot of, or some questions this evening about how to contact and with phones. And you mentioned that once they're on the waiting list, you try to contact them. Off the top of your head, I know it's probably not a scientific, but how many of these folks have phones or not? If you had to take a wild guess?
Well, through coordinated entry, every person that is entered into has been given a phone number. And I think it's probably one hundred percent have had a phone number of some kind to contact them. We haven't had any, let me say the other word, haven't had any that did not have a telephone number to contact today.
So given a number to contact you, they have a way to do that?
Yes, well, none of it's a cell phone number or hard phone with somebody or a friend, but we've all been given phone numbers each and every time.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Major Greider. And on behalf of myself and Councilmember Hondros and Councilwoman Ingram, thank you for giving us that two and a half, three hour tour of your facility and answering all of our questions. And I appreciate you coming and explaining the policies and procedures to council, but not only the council, but the residents of Fayetteville. Just a quick question, you answered most of when you talked about Mr. Abbott busing people to states. We understand the importance of the continuum of care, and we understand the importance of coordinated entry because that's pertinent, especially when you're coming from a different location. Now, we don't know the process in Texas or whether it's Florida, whether they're using a coordinated entry process when they are busing these people. So just tell me and tell the audience, how would you facilitate them shipping people here with continuum of care office and the county and your facility?
Well, depends on the day they drop them. Certainly during the weekdays with coordinated entry, it would be right there. If something happened over the weekend or in the off hours, depending upon the law enforcement, both F P D as well as C C S O, whichever one had received that, then there would be a coordination with us. And in essence, that's when our disaster mode would kick in if that were to happen, and we would have to figure out how to facilitate that. Whether it be using our current facility, within the continuum of care, we actually have, I think it's five other agencies that have limited beds within their programs. So then there would be the outreach to contact them and see if they could also contain them for the time period as well too. So the beds that are available within the county, or within the city and the county, I should say, would be contacted and utilized if that were to happen. But that would not be an immediate microwave moment. It would take time, certainly, it may take a day and a night and then some. So working with the county E O C, as well as with the cities, I think that that's currently how I've been told to address that. And this past Friday, Friday night, we had a good, nice trial run with Ian coming over us, and with the rain and the wind especially. And so we were able to see that, and like I said, we only had thirteen during the day and then eighteen over the night. And then the county opened the rec center and two showed up, but they left, so they didn't stay overnight. They weren't there for a short time.
Follow-up, Major, can you explain, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the white flag emergency we was talking about, that's where you move out the tables from the cafeteria to put those cots out for those 44 beds? Can you explain that to council so they don't think that you have-
That's our dining room, yes. And so that's what we would facilitate. Fire marshal was clear 30, and within the dining room, that was our max. And then we have a side room that we utilize, we call it a multipurpose room, and that's 14. Of course, in an emergency situation, probably shouldn't say this on camera, on the air as I'm being recorded, but he tends to look the other way when there's a desire issue. Like Friday, had it been more than what we had beds for, as long as we safely facilitated, and he came by. I mean, he always does. When we're getting ready to open for stuff like that, fire marshal, the inspector as well, his side assistant, they always come by and check and coordinate with us. So that has been consistent, and I appreciate that as well, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, of course, and thank you for everything that you've been doing for us for the past five years. As I'm listening to everything that's going on and we're going down the path, and I will always say, you know, a business without systems will fail. And I think what I'm hearing right now is, and it even makes me feel better about our Resource Day Center, because that will be part of the system. And what I'm hearing is that now everybody is talking and we can form some kind of system and that we can help in the day center get information, is what I'm hearing, that we've not been able to do-
To obtain.
-for the past five years, because we have to have a system to get them in to help them. So I think that we're on the right path, and I just wanted to applaud you for the work that you've done.
And I agree with the Day Resource Center. And I should add a side note, I had no idea once that opened, the Day Resource Center, I understand CE, coordinated entry is going into that, fantastic. We were approached, but I said, no, I think we better let us stay in the sheltering side and let those who are better and more are able to handle the intake side do that part within the resource center itself. So that's great to see and hear that and it being close by. But I'm not sure what's going to happen with your city-owned facility, a couple houses down across the street where Mana currently is in and resides. We work with Mana very well. They are more programmed, I would say the word transitional. They're not emergency entry and shelter, they're programmed for Mana. And so I'm encouraging them to continue to do that if they have to leave the facility or whatever you're going to do with that building. Actually, equally, not only do we need emergency beds, we really need transitional beds. That will resolve the problems that you were speaking of earlier. It's not so much this and thus the waiting list issue. That's the backup. It's the ability to take them within our shelter through coordinated entry and put them out to where they need to go, to get more intense, direct case management. That is not what we do, and that's on purpose, because that was the agreement of the continuum of care agenda within the agencies. So back to that, that is really the genuine need. So I'm glad you brought that up to give me a chance to say that out loud. We really need whoever can do this within our area utilize their facilities or whatever they have, beds, in other words, for transitional. That means not emergency, that means they've gone through-
Right.
-vetted them, we found out their issue, we've attached them to an agency or someone who can help them move up, move out, move forward. Those are the beds that we need.
And I think we're, I think we're getting, I think step by step, we have to do step one to get to two, two to three. And I think we're on our way, we're moving our steps along because we're all coming together. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, second round.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have someone in here with continuum care or coordinated entry that can have? Okay, I have my questions-
Okay.
-would be towards her, but thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jean, for letting me come on.
Thank you, Major. Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Good to see you, Ms. Abbey.
Yes, ma'am.
So I do have two questions, because to me, I just find it so hard to believe that there's a shelter already in place, but it's not being maximized. So with the coordinated entry process, can you walk me through that?
I come in to an access point, which we have three of those in our city, or I call our number, which is 479-4663, or HOME. Identify to the coordinated entry process, to the intake, ladies and gentlemen, that I am homeless. They have some questions to ask me to determine, am I truly homeless? Do I possibly need resources, whatever that might be? If it's determined that they are truly homeless, then we do have some other information that we gather from them to help us better understand what their circumstances are. Once we have done that, then yes, they are placed on what we call a prioritization list. And that prioritization list, we rank them, if you will, according to acuity level, which means those that are the highest needs are going to be at the top, those with the lowest needs are at the bottom. But they are given like a rank type thing so that we can understand who are those that have that most urgent need at this time. Then we have, yes, folks that are put on that list, being able to be sent to whatever situation it might be, we'll say Salvation Army and this for emergency services. We send them, coordinated entry sends names to Salvation Army. It is up to Salvation Army at that time to take those names, to be able to make contact with these individuals, and then to have those individuals come in and determine, you know, if they are willing to follow what guidelines Salvation Army has.
Okay, then, then how long is your process? When they come through the coordinated entry, how long is that process to verify if they're eligible to go to Salvation Army?
It's truly a matter of maybe an hour at the most. It depends on if the individual that's come to intake or has called through intake, if they have some documentation that they may need, but still, we would have been able to determine if that person is eligible for emergency service after we've done that intake process, which I said shouldn't take more than an hour.
Okay, so I'm just trying to follow along, because I'm still trying to figure out where is, where's the gap? So they come to you to do the intake. That should take, I'll say, two hours at the max. So once they come through you, then you refer them to, well, I'm sorry, Salvation Army contacts them?
We refer, the coordinated entry process is that they refer individuals to the Salvation Army. Then the Salvation Army picks up those names and then they have to do their processing of being able to get in touch with that individual.
Okay, and this is maybe a thought, maybe, this is just a thought. So if they come towards you, more than likely, they don't have transportation or they're probably using someone's phone. Is there, and I mean, Salvation Army, I'm not sure how that works as far as people contacting them or the individuals waiting to be contacted? Is it transportation provided to the Salvation Army? So individuals just waiting to hear something back from?
Right, it would be that the Salvation Army would be contacting that individual based on what information they've given us through coordinated entry. They would be able to give us their phone number, their email, a friend's phone. Generally, they have phones, and so that's not an issue. Plus, we do have programs within our community here in Cumberland County, the geographic area, that does provide phones. And so there shouldn't be an issue of any individual not having phone access. But once they've gotten that, once coordinated entry has received that individual's information, that's shared with Salvation Army through what we've talked about, or what Major Greider was talking about, with HMIS.
Okay, two more questions. Okay, and I don't want to hold everybody. Okay, so, once they're contacted, again, that's only an hour timeframe. I'm sorry, it's a little frustrating, because I'm still not understanding how, if someone's coming or requesting to seek help for sheltering, I really find that hard to believe that they're not answering their phones. How many people are being turned down from coming through you all as far as not being eligible to go into the Salvation Army once they do the intake process?
From our side, none.
Yes.
I mean, anyone that we have evaluated, that we feel like that has met the requirements, if you will, that show that they are in need for emergency services or shelter, then that's entered into HMIS, that's sent through HMIS to coordinated, I mean, to Salvation Army. And then at that point in time, they have to pick up that information and go with it from there.
Okay, thank you, and that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate you all coming. I think what the council, you know, we've been able to glean a couple of things, at least I have, from the presentation. One is certainly we have a growing problem. 82% of the people, according to that, are coming here from other communities, so that's one. Two is we have a program, but if, but it's not, it's being underutilized with the process. So we need to help educate a little bit. And then there are going to be those people who simply don't want to go through the steps that you're recommending. And so with the 98-bed facility, 200 in process, and you're saying that you've never been at capacity, that it shows us we have some work to do to get through the coordination process, but we do want to, are interested in if there are any gaps. And so we do understand that, we thank you for your time, it's been very informative this evening. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, then we need to-
It just came back to mind when you brought up as far as people being transferred here or bused here. We do the same thing. The city, don't we, do we not provide transportation or bus fare to? I don't know who would answer this, one of our staff?
Transportation or buses are available.
Buses, but I'm saying like Greyhound for them to travel outside of the city. Do we not provide those services?
We do provide tickets for family reunification if they meet certain criteria, yes, ma'am.
But thank you. Council, we'll move to item 4.02, Committee for Fayetteville Forward Update.
Mayor Colvin, as those folks are coming up, if I can make a point of order, or inquiry, I should say, are we not discussing anything related to the History Center this evening?
Well, in the beginning of the agenda, the three councilmember requests were removed. There was no formal presentation from a staff report perspective. These were individual requests that follow under the five-minute council request rule that have been taken off.
At this time, Mayor Colvin, if I may, as a part of the majority that made the decision to pass that agenda, I'd ask that we move to amend the agenda and put in 4.07 back onto the agenda. And if we can get a two-thirds vote, I think we can do that tonight.
Well, I have to consult the city attorney, since we've already approved and gone down the list. Madam Attorney, how does that work, adding things after we've already approved the agenda?
What is worth, I looked it up and we can.
Well, I'm gonna ask the city attorney.
But item 4.07 was a councilmember request, and the councilmember asked that that item be removed from the agenda.
Right.
In this case, typically, no change can be made to an adopted agenda, except by two-thirds vote. And so that's exactly what we're looking to do now. I think that there's probably, most of us who want to get that item moved forward, I think it might have been a mistake even that we took it all off, seeing some of those scrambling.
Well, again, I think, I think the difference here, councilmembers, that these were individual councilmember requests, so the people who submitted those requests asked for it to be removed. Councilmember Jensen.
So I guess it- Councilmember Benavente, are you asking to put a different, because a council, are you asking to put a different request on the agenda right now?
No, rather just for us to amend the agenda for an item that was taken off so that we can do it right, because it seems like maybe there was some interest in taking care of that tonight, and I want us to give an opportunity to do that.
And if I may, I think because it's a councilmember request, there really wasn't any action to be done on that. But are you asking to put another item on the agenda that we have a supermajority to put that on?
My hope is that we, at the next full City Council meeting, that we're able to vote on something like 4.07.
So-
In order to do that, I think we have to put it through this work session.
Correct. So are you asking to bring, to bring that motion up, is what I'm asking?
Correct.
So point of order, so if it's a councilmember request, it goes through the process, as you know, as you pointed out, it has a deadline. We had an item that was amended 4.012, because it came after the deadline. So that's a process. I think where staff is, is that when it came up, it failed, and so there will need to be some initiation of action to get it back to the point of where we directed staff one way or another. Now, the individual requests that were originally submitted for tonight's meeting have been withdrawn by those who submitted it. So those items have been deleted, were into the agenda, so unless there's a councilmember request, I don't understand what the ask is completely.
Looked like there was some confusion, and I was hoping that we could have maybe amended and got back on track, but it sounds like maybe there isn't that interest anymore.
All right, well, council, we need to, we need to move on, so we'll kind of get some clarification on that. Item 4.02, Fayetteville Forward, Ms. Jody.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So you have the committee here to provide an update, but I wanted to sneak in and provide an update on our education efforts before they come to you. So we are now in the most critical 40 or so days left of our education campaign. We have a robust campaign in place. The whole goal, of course, is to ensure the residents have the information they need to make an informed decision. The sample ballots are out from North Carolina State Board of Elections, and of course, this is part of what we're trying to educate residents on, that this is the exact language you will see on the bond. There, as you know, is 60 million for public safety, 25 million for public infrastructure, and 12 million for housing opportunity. You're going to hear a little bit about some of the public infrastructure items in an upcoming agenda item tonight. And I do believe Chris Colley is in the audience, too, so should any councilmembers have questions? And of course, we have our public safety folks as well. We'd be happy to answer those and have that discussion. Just as a quick overview for you, in front of you, you see sort of our education matrix for all of the items that we are working on to get this information to residents. We've had great support from members of our local media and really appreciate that. And I thank you all for last week for the appropriation to really lift these education efforts so we can get to more residents. And that, those efforts will actually, you'll begin to see those this week. So we've been hosting a series of education sessions. This is quite possibly one of the most important parts of this campaign. We have three this week, tomorrow at Stony Point, Wednesday at Massey Hill, and Thursday at the Senior Center. We appreciate councilmembers, your attendance and support of those. We've had a lot of really great thoughtful questions and some wonderful interactions with residents to help answer some of these questions and get the information in front of them. And of course, thank you to our Parks and Rec Rec Centers for hosting us. We've done about 15, more than 15 sessions to date, some small attendance, some larger attendance. We've been in front of crowds of 30 to 50, and two sessions we've been at were live broadcast already. So we're really working hard. We've got a busy couple of weeks ahead with 13 confirmed sessions from Kiwanis to Rotary to a variety of other organizations throughout the community. And we've reached out to more than 50 or 60 other community partners to try to get on their schedules and on their agendas. We do have a virtual session open to any member of the public that'll be held on the 19th of October in the evening, and we can certainly schedule plenty more of those as we move along. One of the ways that we're asking residents to engage, whether they come to the sessions or not, we want their feedback, so we've got this engagement hub. FayettevilleNC.gov/bond has an engage hub where residents can answer questions and really provide us the feedback that I'm sure is really important as we make these, these critical bond, moving this critical bond forward and helps us prioritize the process. So again, that is FayettevilleNC.gov/bond. Thank you for the opportunity to sneak in here and give you a quick update on the education efforts. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Peter Stewart and Dr. Rodney McCrory, who's in the audience, and Tammy Thurman, who's the chairwoman of the Greater Fayetteville Chamber, is here as well to sort of give you an update and an overview on what they are doing for their committee.
Evening, y'all. How you doing?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time this evening to address you all, to give you information about the Fayetteville Bonds. I am Dr. Rodney L. McCrory, professor at Fayetteville State University, and I'm joined here by my co-chair, Mr. Peter Stewart, and our Chair of the Chamber, Ms. Tammy Thurman. We do have Mr. Elazio MacArthur, if you please stand, be recognized as a committee member. Go ahead, Pete. Go ahead, Pete.
And Angela Hedgepass is here too. From the Longleaf Pines. And I'll say something in a sec. Go ahead.
So we have a few points that we want to acknowledge on behalf of the committee. We want to first thank you for your vision in proposing these bonds for our Fayetteville voters. Also, we are so excited, and we were excited when we heard about these transformative correction potential investments. With the support of the Greater Fayetteville Chamber, we have established the Fayetteville Fort Committee in support of the bonds. Quite simply, these are investments our city has needed for some time, and we applaud you for reaching the one hundred million mark. There's no doubt that this will be the transformative correction for Fayetteville. So on behalf of the entire committee, we want you to know we are with you in these efforts, and we stand beside you to desire to make Fayetteville safer, more secure, and really transform who we are. We believe in what our city is to become, and we believe this is the best way to make it happen. To that end, we are willing to put our time, our talent, and our treasure behind it. The only way our can-do city will become the best we can is when we work together toward a common goal. To that end, we are working to support your decision, ensuring voters are aware of the importance of their voice in making our streets, our sidewalks, our fire stations, and a 911 center and housing a real possibility or this foreseeable future. Lastly, regardless of what we each individually believe, think, or feel, I am confident that the one thing we can do is all agree on this, that we want to move our city forward. So thank you for this bold action. We applaud you, we thank you, and we stand behind you in these efforts. So I'll do a soft handoff to my co-chair, Mr. Peter Stewart.
Hello, I'm Peter Stewart, 125 Dundee Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina. Lived here all my life, so I'm proud to be a Fayetteville person, and I support our community in anything we can do. Twenty years ago, I worked on the bond, road and school bond. Some of y'all are old enough to remember that. And Fayetteville is one of the few cities in the state that actually passed that bond, and we got the state matching money. Some of y'all remember that. So I've been on campaigns before, and it's all about people and money and getting the word out. So I'm pretty good at that because I've done a lot of that in my lifetime. But we've had three, two meetings, we actually had three meetings. We had the coordination, initial coordination meeting, and then we've had two campaign committee meetings, and we're getting ready to have our third. So I'm just gonna tell you where we're at. Brad Crohn's from Campaign Connections is our paid coordinator. He's out of the Raleigh market, been doing this for years and years and years. So when we were asked to do this, our understanding was we'd help get the word out because we can ask people to vote for this campaign. The city of Fayetteville can only educate. You can't ask them to vote. It's under the Chamber of Commerce, we can ask people to vote, and we can ask people to give us money to help get the word out. So that's what we're doing. The Longleaf Pines Realtors Association, and I mentioned Angie back here earlier, they have given us the bulk of the money we have to run this campaign. They have pledged twenty-five thousand dollars, and they're hoping to get, maybe get some more, but I don't think we are because we're too short on the line. Otherwise, people can give directly, and we've been going through the Chamber of Commerce's portal, they call them e-blasts, and asking people to give. And if you believe in something, sometimes you got to give out of your wallet too. It's not just talk, it's real giving. And I can say that Johnny Dawkins has given to this campaign. I've given to this campaign, Rod has given to this campaign, and I ask of y'all to consider, I know you give tons of time, but if you want to help in this campaign, we would love for your financial help. You have a sheet on your table we passed out earlier. That's our website, and it's Vote For, Vote For Fayetteville. So if you go to that campaign site, it lays it out exactly how we are promoting it, and it actually has, one of them says contribute. And if you can hit the contribute button, you can hit the portal and make a pledge. But, so we have to ask people to give money. But beyond that, we are in the process, we have about fifteen, sixteen members on our committee. The yard signs will be coming in the end of this week. We're planning on getting those out. We are looking at doing some digital marketing. We are also looking at doing some radio commercials. And then, then we'll do poll workers, and Election Day, we'll have people there giving out information. And then we've been helping coordinate, or Jody's helped us coordinate, so if we have somebody that wants to hear what's going on, we call Jody, and then she'll send a team there to explain what the bond is all about. I think that covers it, doesn't it, Tammy? Would you like to say something, Tammy, from the chamber?
We're good.
Any questions?
Any questions?
I have one, Mr. Stewart.
Yes. So I'll go to Councilmember Banks McGuffin, then Thompson.
Well, not a question. I just first want to say thank you for taking this initiative and running with it. And to the Longleaf Pine, thank you for your contribution because as we know, this initiative, this bond, will help our city. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson, then here.
It has been my experience, sometimes when you're, no, I'm not even going to say that. Let me just say this, would you accept volunteers as poll workers?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
That's what I wanted to know.
Our next meeting, we're going to be coordinating, working on the poll workers and getting out the yard sign. That's our agenda for Wednesday at four o'clock over at the, what's the building called? Festival Park Building. You're welcome to come to that meeting. Johnny came to our first meeting. Any of y'all are welcome to come to our meeting. You can give money out of your campaign, just want to let you know that. We've cleared it. So if you've done a personal check, but you have some money left over from elections and you didn't spend it all, we can accept those funds.
That's a good one.
I didn't sell cars for thirty-one years, not to ask last.
That's right. Wait there. Thank you, sir. Before I cease my saying, I want to give a personal thanks to council member Banks. Thank you. I didn't give my address at the beginning, but I want to give it now, the sixty-twenty Crown Ridge Court, that's over in the James Creek area. Thank you so much for all of your efforts and leadership as well, for getting lighting out there on that highway. So thank you for helping keeping our residents safe on that side of town. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember here.
Sir, mayor, thank you. And my salute really was going to go over to staff because one of my number-one things was making sure that we educated our citizens. That was a big deal for me. And so thank, where did she go, Ms. Phillips? Oh, there you are. So thank you for all of those events that have been taking place across the city. I have been using, I've been blessed, I have a little over eight thousand contacts, and I've really been sending that information out to people. And that's very important, not that I'm trying to lead them one way or the other on my point, but at least educating them with the information and letting them know where things are going. So I just wanted to share that and say thank you because that was important. Thank you, and thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you guys for what you're doing.
Mister Mayor, can I add one thing?
Okay. Councilmember Thompson.
Just for my constituents in District Six, tomorrow at five forty-five, we will be at Stony Point. So if you have any questions about the bond, please come to Stony Point Recreation Center at five forty-five. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Item four point oh three is a pavement condition survey report. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. All right. Good evening. We're going to talk about the pavement preservation program with a heavy lean on the results of the 2022 pavement study that was recently completed. So what is your street network? It's your most valuable asset. It's an integral part of everyday life. It's one of the city's largest financial assets, estimated at about five hundred and sixty million dollars. It can also have significant impacts, both positive and negative, on many aspects of municipal activities. So the big question is, is your network getting the attention it deserves? So let's take a look at the City of Fayetteville street system. Fayetteville's about ninety-five square miles. Of the eleven hundred and ninety-four centerline miles in the city, sixty-three percent of those roads are City of Fayetteville maintained streets. So about seven hundred and fifty-six miles. For the fiscal year twenty-two, the pavement preservation program consisted of our POW bill allotment as well as two million dollars from the general fund for a total of around six point five million dollars that we had last fiscal year. With that money, we were able to do traditional resurfacing on a little over twenty miles and then pavement preservation methods on about thirty other miles, consisting of slurry and cape seal. So you had a total of about fifty-one miles that we were able to treat last year of our street network. Just have a couple of links here that you can go to that are live on the website. One is a link to our pavement preservation projects and overall maps where you can see where we are paving now and where we have completed pavement and resurfacing in the past, as well as a link to the pavement condition index map, which I will kind of preview here, but then I'll touch on it at the end of the presentation. But if you click on that link, it'll pull up a side-by-side map where you can see where we have our proposed pavement preservation, where we're going to resurface and do other treatments, and then our completed pavement preservation. So I know that a lot of council members get a lot of questions from constituents about when their road's getting paved or when any kind of work's doing.
Just about, give me one second.
I just want to stop you for one moment. Would you go back to the street systems? Because I want to make sure I, okay, I want to make sure I'm correct because I want to share this information. That link that's, the pavement, for the overall maps, that link there? If I, you said that link will show where what's been paved and what's going to be paved?
Yes. It shows what are the completed and what is currently in the resurfacing program now. If you click on the second link, which will take you to this website here, and I can pull that up at the end of the presentation.
Okay, and this is only for FY twenty-two, not twenty-three?
We have it for three years, right? Yes, we have it for three, projecting out twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
And all that's in this link?
Yes.
Preservation, okay. Thank you.
And I'll click on it at the end because it's hard to season down.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I want to share this with citizens. Thank you.
Okay. So what is pavement performance? As pavement ages and experiences traffic, it gets distresses and it begins to accumulate and deteriorate. It's normal after three to five years for asphalt to become brittle and start cracking. Water then begins entering those cracks. It freezes, it thaws during the yearly cycle, and it causes larger cracks and potholes. And we just have three different examples. We've got a pothole, alligator cracking, as well as edge cracking. So what is the main problem? We have a high need. We have seven hundred and fifty-six miles that we're responsible for that continuously deteriorates on a daily basis. We also have a low budget. We have four point seven million dollars a year that we put towards resurfacing. That is all money that comes from the POW bill. I'll get to it in a little bit, but you'll see to eliminate the backlog of our streets would require about thirty million dollars a year. So where were we, where we are, and where we will be? So if we look back and convert our old PCR ratings to PCI from 2012 and 2016, you'll see our overall roadway condition was an eighty-two in 2012, and that was an eleven percent drop into 2016 at an eighty-one. Our current 2022 PCI rating, which is what we got from our pavement condition study earlier this year, is a seventy-two. What we've projected out in 2026, if we do a seventy-thirty split, seventy percent straight traditional resurfacing, thirty percent other treatment methods such as slurry seal, we're at a sixty-seven point five. If we just do traditional resurfacing, it drops down even lower to a sixty-five. So what does that tell you? Our current funding can't even keep up the current rating of our street network. So what were some of the causes of that? Preventative treatment was not employed until this past fiscal year. So traditionally, all we did was resurface. Obviously, the funding is not enough just from the POW bill. And then, of course, like a lot of things, maintenance cost has increased. So just a little chart to show where we are and where we're trending to. All right, so what is the solution? In pavement management, it's a program employing a network-level, long-term strategy that enhances pavement preservation by using an integrated, cost-effective set of practices that extend pavement life and improve safety and meet motorists' expectations. So you have your traditional resurfacing plus your preventative maintenance equaling optimized pavement management for your city's street network. So what is optimized pavement management? All right, so this figure illustrates that typically pavement starts deteriorating rapidly once they hit a specific threshold, the critical PCI. A nominal investment in cheaper surface treatments at forty percent lifespan is much more effective than deferring maintenance until heavier overlays or possible reconstruction is required. Roadways that are repaired while in good condition will have an extended lifetime and will cost less overall than those left to deteriorate to a poor condition. This is also, if you get below that critical PCI, this is where the backlog begins to accumulate. So if you look at, excuse me, strategy comparisons, pavement preservation is the proactive maintenance of asphalt by applying proper treatment at the right time. The diagram below shows the typical life cycle for pavement. The curve shows that as the pavement condition worsens, the treatment cost increases. Preventative maintenance costs are far less than the ultimate repair costs. If we apply cost-effective preservation treatments to asphalt, you can extend the life of your road and save valuable budget dollars. So to get into our road pavement survey that was done, the last survey that was done was done in 2016. They collected data only through cameras, so there was no automated laser crack detection. The data was assessed by checking photographs and windshield observations. The determined converted PCI of that network was an eighty-one in 2016. We used Viewworks software for checking only the condition ratings. So that Viewworks software didn't run any kind of budget scenarios or provide us any kind of optimized maintenance recommendations. So the new road pavement survey study that was completed this year, I performed a network-level field condition survey of the streets, seven hundred and fifty-six miles. We are now provided an up-to-date pavement condition index for each street. We're also implementing a new pavement management platform, Paver, on the city server. That will estimate the future maintenance and rehabilitation requirements, and it also, we were converting legacy database PCRs to the new pavement condition criteria PCI. The methodology behind the new survey, an automated pavement condition survey system was fitted with 3D laser crack measurement system that was deployed for distress detection. 4K HD digital cameras were used to capture surface pictures for forward, side, rear, and right-of-way views. All distresses, including patches, pothole settlements, alligator, and edge cracks, were assessed in accordance with ASTM D six four three three. So what were our 2022 study results? If you look at a functional class of the city's street network, one percent of the city's streets are principal, one percent are arterial, two percent are collector, and then ninety-six percent of the streets we're responsible for are residential. Here's just kind of an index that shows you the different ranges for the PCI. It ranges from zero to a hundred, with a hundred being a recently resurfaced road and zero completely failed. You can see the different PCI ranges and typical pavement distresses and M and R needed. You'll see if a road is in satisfactory or good condition, normally you can do more cost-effective preventative treatments to the roads than if you get down into your kind of low or fair, poor, and very poor, where you have to resurface or mill and resurface. And then when you get to serious and failed, you're looking at complete street reconstruction. So the 2022 study results for our principal roads, our PCI was a sixty-nine. Let me back up and show you again. So fifty-five to seventy was fair, seventy to eighty-five was satisfactory. So our principal streets were at a sixty-nine, our arterials were at a seventy-one, our collectors were at a seventy-three, and our residential's were at a seventy-two. So overall, our PCI, if you look at it in aggregate, is a seventy-two. Again, the pavement condition index map, you probably can't make much out of this. We'll zoom in some, kind of at a neighborhood level. And then if you fully zoom in, and we've zoomed in the city hall, so the street we've pulled up is Pittman Street. So you'll see we have the most recent pavement condition for every street that the city's responsible for, where you'll see Pittman, which was recently resurfaced two years ago at a PCI of ninety-one point four. So we can navigate to anywhere in the city, zoom in and click on a street. We can get- We can get the length, we can get the width, and we can get the PCI for that street. So how did we select where we were resurfacing and doing treatments at before? So this was the pavement selection procedure that we used in the past. Again, remember, Viewworks didn't have any kind of mechanism that said this is the best place to put your money. We basically divided the city into five different regions and determined the level and severity of distress in each region. We then allocated funding to each region based on their demand level. This procedure is no longer going to be employed. When we look at our pavement management system, the Paver, it is the most wisely, excuse me, the most widely used in the world. Paver is state-of-the-art technology in pavement management. The software was developed by the Corps of Engineers. It uses PCI criteria as the ASTM standard. It's promoted by APWA, and several, several major supporters of this pavement management system are the Department of Defense, US Air Force, US Army, the US Navy, the Federal Aviation Administration, and the Federal Highway Administration. So how are we going to do the pavement selection procedure? Paver uses, utilizes an internal algorithm to develop optimized plans based on the critical PCI, the street classification, what your yearly budget is, so you can program in what your yearly budget's going to be, the time period, as well as the treatment type and cost. That optimizes the best usage of funding so that we can obtain the highest PCI for the city's network. We can optimally assign maintenance strategies. We can also scatter maintenance actions throughout the city, and this gives us a long-term plan for preventative and resurfacing actions. There is some subjectivity to it, so some additional criteria that we look at are where are other capital projects at. So we have streets that we may defer because you have a large stormwater project going on. We obviously are not going to go pave streets in an area that's in annexation that still hasn't had water or sewer installed, because the last thing we're going to do is pave the roads to have them torn up, to have those utilities installed. And we also try to coordinate with the Public Works Commission to see where they have utility projects, so that we're not paving roads that are going to get torn up shortly after being resurfaced. So if you look at the pavement selection procedure, the scattered maintenance that's recommended for twenty-twenty-three, it's kind of hard to tell what the streets are, but you'll see how it scatters it out throughout the city. And then if you look, we can project out to twenty-twenty-six as far as what is recommended. So if we look at our twenty-twenty-two study results, we were able to look at different budget scenarios using a seventy-thirty split for resurfacing and slurry. So seventy percent of our funding would go toward resurfacing, thirty percent would go towards slurring those better-conditioned streets. So you'll see, if we just, if we do nothing, if we don't spend any money on our streets, in five years, our PCI drops down to a sixty-four, and the backlog grows to a hundred-and-ninety-two million. If we were to eliminate the backlog, which the backlog is everything sixty-five and below, if we eliminate, if eliminate the backlog, which is everything sixty-five and below, you would have to budget thirty-three million dollars a year for the next five years. And then in the end of that five years, our, our street network condition would be at eighty-six. If we just want to maintain where we're at right now, we need to budget about ten million dollars a year over the next five years. That's just to maintain where we're at now. Remember, we only get four-point-seven million dollars from POW bill. And then we did some other funding scenarios as well. We ran it at six-and-a-half million dollars, five-and-a-half, and then six. And then if you look at the unlimited budget, just to explain that, that's, that's if you had a blank check and could just get rid of the backlog in one year and then average it out over five years. So we've just got it in a little bit of a table summary here that just kind of better quantifies what was shown in the graph. You'll see the backlog elimination of thirty-three million dollars per year gets you an eighty-six. On down to the two highlighted at the bottom, four-point-seven million dollars a year at a seventy-thirty split, we'll get you a sixty-seven-point-five, whereas if you just did traditional resurfacing, four-point-seven million dollars, you'd be at a sixty-five at the end of five years. All right, so if you look at the current network condition distribution, which is in red, against the five-year post-rehab distribution in twenty-twenty-six, just having four-point-seven million dollars a year. As I've shown, the PCI goes down. Again, I'll just touch on the twenty-twenty-two study results to show you that our roads are deteriorating faster than what we're funding to rehab them. Pavement conditions are categorized based on PCI values, again, using the ASTM standard criteria. Again, this is just a chart that was in there earlier. It's key to keep streets within the range of satisfactory or good before it's too late, because once it gets too late, then you're having to mill and resurface or do traditional resurfacing, and you get low-mileage coverage that lends to an accumulation of backlog. Again, if you look at the condition of network by percentage, you would, you would do traditional resurfacing on about three-hundred-and-eighteen miles. You would do preventative maintenance on around two-hundred-and-eighty miles. And then currently, there's about a hundred-and-fifty-one miles that there's essentially no maintenance that needs to be done. But let's be realistic. With our current funding of four-point-seven million dollars, if you just did traditional resurfacing and you neglected the two-hundred-and-eighty miles that need preventative maintenance, you're only going to resurface about fifteen miles a year. Over a five-year span, that's around seventy-five miles. So you're only resurfacing twenty-three percent of what needs to be resurfacing. So what are the consequences of just doing traditional resurfacing? The condition of the two-hundred-and-eighty miles that need preventative maintenance worsen. Each year, more miles are added to the poor list that need the expensive maintenance, and the backlog continues to grow. So just a couple of examples, this is Scotland Drive, this has a PCI of forty-eight, so this would be recommended for resurfacing. This is Mohawk Avenue, this is a PCI of seventy, this would be a candidate for the slurry seal application. So just to kind of show you a difference between the condition of the two streets. So it's not lost on us that there is a general obligation bond in November. So you may ask what the plan for the bond budget is if it were to pass. There's the twenty-five-million-dollar infrastructure bond. We've identified of that twenty-five million dollars, putting fourteen-point-seven million dollars towards the resurfacing program. We realistically think that we could spend that over a three-year period, so about four-point-nine million dollars a year. We would put all of that money into traditional resurfacing, so we would not do any slurry application with any bond money. If you look at our overall PCI network, if that, if the bond were to pass, after five years, our PCI would be around seventy. If we don't have the bond, again, it'll be about sixty-seven-point-five. So just, just a little metric or educational point to show you what the influx of funds, how that can drastically affect your PCI rating. Again, this is the current funding versus scenarios we ran if the bond was included. So that's the good thing about Paver, you can run different budgeting scenarios. You'll see that with the bond money, you can resurface a lot more miles. So right now, with just POW bill, we can do around ten, ten miles of resurfacing. But if we get that influx from the bond, we project that we can do about twenty-eight miles a year. So staff recommendation, we're just showing you that the bond budget is necessary, and it can be a short-term, effective action to help kind of maintain that PCI of the city's street network. We also think there's an additional work session that'll need to be required to discuss how pavement management can be a solution. The city needs to consider additional yearly funding to maintain the PCI, I think that's obvious. Right now, we cannot maintain our street network with POW bill alone. And that the city also needs to employ preventative treatments. The employment of the preventative treatments such as slurry should be a continual practice moving forward. With that, I'll, I'll take any questions or?
Yes, sir.
I would also like to recognize Dr. Amit Tahaemi, who is our pavement preservation manager. So he runs our pavement preservation program, does all the resurfacing, and he did the heavy lifting on the presentation as, as well as the pavement condition survey. So just want to acknowledge.
Good evening, sir, thank you for your work. Do you have a question, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor, thanks for your report. I do agree, we need to do more. Two questions. Did you say that our POW bill funding, did you say it was four-point-seven?
That, that is what we put toward the resurfacing program. We get more than four-point-seven million dollars, but some goes to our street maintenance department that fills in potholes or does, does other things. But what we traditionally have for our resurfacing or our pavement preservation programs, four-point-seven million dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. Now, it may go up a little bit every year.
So then actually, how much do we get? Ballpark it.
Six-and-a-half, six, six, six-and-a-half million dollars.
Okay, so we take a little over two, about two mil for patch repair, things along that line. Could you go back to the slide where you were showing, I don't, I can't remember the street name. Okay, right there, okay. Now, okay, that's slurry, okay, go to the other one then. That's resurfacing. And where, where I have problems in understanding, especially when I'm faced with questions with my residents, is that I see what I see here, and I see what I see on the other slide for slurry. I've got a couple of streets that have grass growing up through them, and they don't reach the same point as this. That confuses me sometimes in how to explain, how to explain this to my, to my residents because they would love to have that, what I see on, on the screen here. So it's, it's like it's twisted in trying to explain grass growing up through whatever that process we used to use. I can't.
You crack seal it.
Yeah, the crack seal, which I've always hated. I do like the slurry, I really, that's a big pump, so. But I'm trying to, it's kind of a misleading or misunderstanding how to explain when you say this is okay for, to be a candidate for paving or slurry, but grass growing up through the seal cracking in a couple of neighborhoods that I can talk sidebar with you about, you, you lost me. And my people, my citizens, my residents are lost.
Yeah, and so before you do the slurry application, those areas should be crack sealed. And I think kind of a lesson learned that we learned from the last slurry contract is, is that there probably needs to be, in addition to the crack seal, and some type of herbicide applied to the area to help. However, you're not always going to be able to fully eliminate the grass growing up in some of the cracks.
And I get, I get that, I get that, but it's still, you, you, I'm not where I want to be, and I guess, I guess I won't get it tonight. But it's, it's misleading for me in having a discussion with fifty or sixty people in a room about streets in the neighborhood when they would like to have these, and I may not have the same type of complaint, but they don't have this. They, they have, you follow, you my, my understanding? So it makes it very difficult, I don't know if we need to revisit the process. I, I know we need more money, so that goes without saying. But there is a big issue between the two in how to explain this process is accepted, but would this street is accepted for whatever the two we do, slurry or resurfacing versus, oh, no, this doesn't, because you got to fill it up with the, with the seal, which I think is ridiculous, because, but I've, I've never liked the seal, okay? So just wanted to share that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Hare. So I, I want to pick it back on that a little bit. I think what, what my interest is, and I think it may be somewhat what Councilmember Hare is talking about, is the scoring of these streets. You, how do you determine which one prioritized over another? Now, I know you have a matrix that you used that showed whether you graded, you had it on the screen, you know, forty to fifty or forty to sixty means something, seventy and above means something else. But as he said, the, the dynamics as to what determines that? Because if you have a neighborhood with, that has a higher rating, but has grass growing in the middle of the street, which there are several, that is a problem for people to see that. And so is that, the, the basis that you use, the scoring mechanism, the matrix you use for that, where do you get that from?
Maybe you want to speak to that? And I, just the, the, the cracks in the road, whether there's grass growing in it or not, that's just one type of distress that gets looked at. So irregardless if there was grass growing in there or not, the crack was picked up in this pavement condition.
Right, but I guess our question is, is it weighed any heavier when there's more of that versus less of that? Or are you looking at other factors to determine that ultimate score and?
Yeah, if there's more cracks on a, on a street segment, then it, then it is weighted more than if there is less cracks, yes.
Okay.
So I can say that then, there are different factors affecting the cracks. For example, the weeds, the dips, and the connectivity of those cracks. So when we have a lot of cracks, for example, like here, can I go to that?
Okay.
For instance, here you can see how the cracks are connected to each other. But here, we have only one continuous crack. We can call them blocking cracks. And if you have only cracks with the grass, and if the number of those cracks are very limited, so it means that the traffic is not very high over there. So it depends on the traffic volume over there as well. So we, we need to consider different factors, not only the, and the cracks. So also here, we can see that we have a patches here. So the combination of the distresses will determine the, the overall PCI for that street. So and based on that, the Paver will recognize what, what is the suitable treatment for that street, and what can be effective. If we, for example, select resurfacing for one street which is not necessary, we are kind of wasting our money. And if, for example, for this street, if we select a slurry seal, again, that's not going to be effective. Again, that's going to be wasting our money.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Thompson, then Hare again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just help me understand, according to your chart, ninety, ninety-six percent of the roads are residential, correct? Wear and tear on resurfacing, wear and tear on pavement that needs to be resurfaced is based on traffic, weather, and weight, correct?
It's going to be, and one factor is a yes.
Okay, so my question would be then is, and it's going to relate to Councilman Hare's question. If Raferd Road, Sky Bow, Ramsey, Fort Bragg, that has all the traffic, PCI is always going to be below seventy, they're always going to be resurfaced, correct?
Those are NCDoT-maintained roads, so they would not.
I was just, I was just being facetious when I used it. I was saying all the roads that have heavy traffic all the time, that are city-owned, are going to be resurfaced first, correct?
We cannot say that they are going to go resurface first. It depends on what year it is recommended based on the period. For example, one street will be selected for twenty-twenty-three, the others.
Trust me, sir, I understand that. The point I'm trying to make is, if it's going to be resurfaced, that means it's going to fail faster than a street that hasn't been resurfaced, that doesn't have as much traffic, weight, or weather conditions, is my point.
Yes.
So I guess our questions are, when are residential areas, like the one he spoke of, that has grass, ever going to be resurfaced? That's the question. Because they're always going to have another road that has more priority than them, according to your scientific determination.
Well, here, I mean, we can see that, for instance, here. Because the majority of our streets are residential areas, it's going to consider residential streets for resurfacing. So it's not all about we are going to take care of streets with higher volume of traffic, for example, like Ramsey Street. So definitely, for example, you can say it is only for twenty-three. And we have, for each year, we have a plan, and it's scattered throughout the city. So of course, it's considering the traffic, but other factors are important. And the ultimate goal of this Paver is to obtain the highest PCI for the city's network. So it's going to upgrade the Network Pavement Condition Index, not especially for one region or one street. It's just focusing on improving the condition of entire network.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare, you have something?
It's just, just one follow-up. If the bond is passed, does the process change with, with paving? Or we still going to use the same process with so, with a, with so much more of abundance of, of, of funding? Do we stay like it is, and those folk or concerns like I have and others that you hear tonight, do they stay where they are, or do they kind of move up some?
So i- if the bond were to pass, we would, we would recommend that we use all of the bond money on traditional. So, i- i- if the bond were to pass, we would, we would recommend that we use all of the bond money on traditional resurfacing. So obviously, if we do that, that escalates our ability to resurface those residential streets. So, um, let me, let me go to my last slide, just to, just to kind of, I guess, quantify it some, so bear with me. If the bond, if the bond doesn't pass, we can resurface about ten miles. If the bond does pass, and we break it out over three years, we can resurface twenty-eight miles. So we, we feel as though we can resurface eighteen additional miles. So almost three times as much in a year than what we're currently doing now. So we would get the streets quicker.
And we will be looking at, if I'm looking, understanding your graph, so we will be getting fourteen point seven million dollars in addition to the, um, to the, to the grant money that we receive now, the power bill money now.
Of the, of the twenty-five million dollar infrastructure bond, we're recommending fourteen point seven of that twenty-five to go toward the pavement preservation and traditional resurfacing. So that, that would be in addition to power.
And I appreciate it, guys. It's not, you know, not really trying to, you know, boom, boom, boom on you about it, but we know that this is a struggle for us in, in the city as far as repaving. And the, you know, when the community screams, then, you know, you all get what you all get when you come before us, because they are screaming. So thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I think I wanted to note also that, um, the, the bond money is going to be used for traditional resurfacing. We're still going to get power bill bill, but power bill funds, and that is going to be the seventy-thirty split, where seventy percent will be used towards traditional resurfacing, and thirty will be used for pavement preservation. So the bond money is completely and totally all going to be traditional resurfacing.
Yes, he stated, thank you, thank you, appreciate you.
So go to Councilmember Jensen, then Thompson. Then Banks, McGlaughlin, then Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just a point of reference, um, and thank you for all the work that you've done. So if I'm not mistaken, City Manager, haven't for the past two years that we have upped our game on resurfacing? And if I'm not mistaken, we moved it maybe two to three times up? Or we did three million dollars more, two million dollars more last year on resurfacing?
In addition to the power bill and FY twenty-two, uh, there was two million additional dollars. So last fiscal year, not, not FY twenty-three, but FY twenty-two, there was an additional two million dollars.
Right, and it was like forty-seven years that it was on the scale of, you know, if your street got repaved, it took forty-seven years, and we've moved it up to, if I'm, it was seventeen is, is my, if I'm not mistaken? So I just wanted the listening audience to know that we have been working on this diligently, and that you have made great improvements, and the report that you're giving us is showing, I'm going to go back to the point A to point B, that we're starting the system moving, that we're able to get these streets resurfaced a lot faster. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation. Uh, my question is, this is done, well, like every three to four years, possibly? Okay, so when we have a, um, have a list of priority, so do we go back after the four years? Do we start back fresh, or do we go off of that list? When we have additional funds coming in, do we go off the already list? Or, and the reason I'm asking, because the priority can possibly shift, especially growth in different communities.
Yes, so, just say if this was done every three to five years. Uh, whenever the pavement condition survey was done, that would reflect any resurfacing or pavement preservation that was done. So if you, I'm just gonna ballpark numbers here. If you had a PCI of seventy, and you slurry sealed that road, and it went to a seventy-eight, that would be reflected in the next pavement condition survey. Vice versa, if you had a street that was a forty-five, and it got resurfaced, and now it's showing at a ninety, when you did it the next time, it would not, it would not recommend any type of preventative treatment there. Obviously, the pavement is not getting any better. So if it, if, if our pavement, um, if the PCI is, say, a seventy-five, and it doesn't get any resurfacing or any kind of slurry treatment, uh, if this is done five years in the future, it's not gonna be a seventy-five, it's gonna be less. So, yes, it is updated, it would be updated with new data, but that data would be driving the priorities. Like you said, if you've got growth, if you've got more wear and tear in an area versus another area of the city. So, um, I think that's, that, that is a driving factor in doing these every five years or so, so that you're, you're, you're planning and you're doing your pavement preservation with the most up-to-date data, so you're addressing the, the streets that need it the most, when they need it.
Okay, and thank, oh, go ahead.
I think I was also gonna say that we are not going to wait five years. We're gonna request funds to be able to do this every two to three years. We'll start the process in the second year and complete it by the third. Uh, so every three years, we'll, on average, we'll have a new pavement condition index for the entire city, and we'll know the data for each street every three years. And so everything will be shifted every three years.
Okay, and thank you. And I guess to the, um, the viewing audience, um, the viewing, can't get my words out. For the viewing audience, viewing audience, that's, um, one impact or a positive impact that can come from this once, if the, um, the bond is approved. So this can definitely help, um, throughout our city. So that's just something to consider, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Thompson, second round.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Reeves, uh, two questions. I hope I didn't lose my train of thought. Annexation, was the annexation repaving part of your twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget? The resurfacing of areas twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-two, phase one and two?
There is a, there is a portion of resurfacing that the city is obligated to pave in those annexation areas. So there is some resurfacing funds that, that go towards, uh, areas that have been paved and annexated.
So according to your report, was those streets taken off of your ninety-eight miles since they have just been resurfaced within months?
Ninety-eight miles.
Well, how many miles is in the city?
Uh, no, they, they would not have been taken off of our list. They would have, they, they would have been written by the, by the band.
And they would have been given a one hundred PCI?
They would be given a very high PCI, yes.
My final question is, according to your slides, you are budgeted four point seven million, and you're asking for ten point one million for the entire roadway to be above seventy-one PCI, correct? If I got those numbers correct?
If, if you, so in the, with the paver application, you can run different funding scenarios. And for us to maintain the current PCI, we would need around ten million dollars a year.
That's to keep us above seventy-one. That's the fair, that's the fair level, correct? Is that the fair or the good level?
That's to keep us where we're at, which is, I forgot, what is the term? Is it satisfactory?
That's the fair level, satisfactory, okay. So we need to increase your budget by three point eight million per year outside of the bond? Is what you're asking?
No, you need, need to increase it about six million.
Say that again?
Increase it by about six million.
Six million. Got you, sir.
That's just to maintain it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Well, guys, thank you, uh, great rollout. I guess, we, where can we find the matrix question to how you determine the things that are factored into scoring? Is that in the presentation anywhere? Okay.
Yeah, and it's in the, it's in the cam, how it's, it's loaded. And I would just kind of point up, point out on this, uh, this map that we've got. It's kind of side by side, but we've got proposed pavement preservation and then completed. So you can go on this map and see what we're proposing. I don't have that on over here. The proposed pavement, um, where we're proposing versus what's been completed. But also, if you turn off the propose and turn on the pavement condition, uh, you can go to any street in the city, zoom in, click on it, and you can see what your PCI is. So any, any.
Yeah, now, what, where, where do the citizens find this, uh, this right here?
This, the link was in the presentation, but it'll be on our, it'll be live on our website this week.
All right, thank you. Yep, two hours in, uh, Council moved item four point oh four, Development Services Permitting Inspections. Customer Journey, not sure about that one. How you doing, sir?
Doing good, Mayor. So looking at this, um, project here, this was a process that we had brought together, um, Development Services with our development community. And the City Manager tasked us all to help us facilitate this, and we reached out to Zellows, which is a consultant that will be presenting this, uh, presentation tonight. We wanted an outside source to come in and be able to look at our, our routines, our routes, and the customer's journey when they come in to actually pull a permit with our Development Services, um, Department. Um, so at this point in time, we're gonna have Ms. Stacia, she is the CEO for Zellows, to present. She will be doing it on Zoom, and I, I will be here for any questions. She is having little issues hearing counsel, also there may be sometimes we have to repeat a question. If that's not an issue, if not, we will follow up with her with some of the questions from there. I'll turn it over to Ms. Stacia, and she'll be presenting through Zoom.
Okay, one moment. And Mayor, we do have a backup if this fails, so. And while we're getting this started, Mayor, um, for several months, um, the council, you will hear concerns from developers and citizens about being able to navigate through our development processes. Some people who have been through our processes say it's some of the smoothest they've had in their, in their development career. And others have also expressed some concern about it may not necessarily be clear as to where you start or with whom you contact if you run into problems. And so as Chris identified, we did reach out to Zellows, and she'll be on in just a moment, to help us map out, um, I guess, the customer's journey. And as part of that, we not only looked internally at our processes, we talked to city staff, but more importantly as well, we tried to reach out to our development community and get their perspective as well. We were hoping to have all of this ready, as we, it is right now. So then we opened up the first floor here of our development center, which is across the lobby, that we'd be able to employ lessons learned from this process to make sure that we are, in fact, development-ready and that we are able to help developers and citizens move through our development processes and get their projects completed. With that said, is Stacia up now?
I'm here, I'm just not able to share my screen. Okay, here we go, I see it. Okay, can you all see the screen that says Zellows helps?
And we may need Gavin to put it on our monitors up here.
And then the microphone I could hear best is from the speaker podium.
Okay, Stacia, please, we're ready.
Okay, okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council, for inviting me to share the information about our work with the city to gather information from the city's customers who are or have recently been in the development process in Fayetteville. My name is Stacia Alford, I am the CEO of Zellows. And Zellows is a small woman in business where you're located in Northern Virginia. We've been in business since two thousand and six, and we have worked with over fifty mission-driven and customer-focused clients, governments and nonprofits, like the city of Fayetteville. Uh, over the years, we've had the pleasure of working with a number of localities in North Carolina, including the city of Durham, Durham County, Goldsboro, Morrisville, and also currently working with the town Apex. Uh, we also work regularly with Alliance Health, who has a presence right there in Fayetteville. So we were delighted, um, last year, in early twenty-twenty-one, to submit a proposal to the city to help it gather information from its customers, uh, again, who are, were currently in or, or had recently been in the development process in the city. Uh, we believe that we are selected for that work because of our deep experience with local governments and our expertise in facilitation. We regularly facilitate both community and staff groups to gather input and insights to help our customers make sound decisions in their services to the public. So over the past eleven months or so, we've had the fortune to work with great people in the City Manager's Office and in the departments that are involved in the development process, including Development Services, Public Services, and Fire. But we've also met some of your customers, and we were able to meet and talk with property owners, engineers, architects, builders, and some many trades professionals, all of whom care very much about their work and their customers, just like the city does. Wanted to mention that during this work, we were collecting information and insights from your customers in a pretty challenging environment. The services that you were offering and delivering had changed a little bit due to COVID, reducing some of the in-person availability for services for your customers, and including some staffing challenges. And also throughout twenty-twenty-two, we're working in an environment where your, your businesses, your customers, are very busy with high demand for their services, and they're also pretty understaffed. And then, of course, thankfully, the third one is a, is a positive, and we're working in an environment of continuous and constant improvement, which means that the city really is taking steps every day. Sometimes steps that go unnoticed by customers to make processes and procedures and your policies easier and better for the customers. So let's look at our process for the last eleven months or so. Our first engagement was in, starting in November of twenty-twenty-one, and we were brought in to gather information and insights from customers and from staff about the customer journey and the development process. Then based on that information we gathered, we facilitated multiple internal sessions with the City Manager's Office and the relevant departments to identify possible improvements, possible actions to take, and to help the decision-makers make plans for implementation. Most recently, we took a final step in July to share back some of that information with customers who participated in that twenty-twenty-one effort, and also with additional customers who were interested and available to participate. So next, I'd like to share a little bit more detail about each of these steps in the process. So as I mentioned, our first step was to explore your customers' journey and experience. And we did this in two ways. We facilitated a large staff session to map out the customer journey. That customer journey mapping was specifically for customers who are building vertically in the city. And through that facilitated session, staff really put themselves into their customers' shoes to get a better understanding about how, how complex that journey can be to some customers, and especially how complex it was during COVID, when people weren't able to come in person. Staff also were able to see where they might be able to make some improvements. And through that session, we were also able to get a better sense of what kinds of questions we wanted to ask the customers in our customer-focused groups. So after our customer journey mapping session with staff, we hosted four focus groups. Eighteen customers participated in those four focus groups. We offered them both in person and for. We offered them both in-person and virtually, and we offered them and invited builders and designers as well as property owners. Uh, in those focus groups, they shared what was really important to them as customers of the city. They shared how the city is doing on six key drivers of customer satisfaction. And they, um, really rated the, the city well on those six key drivers. They were all above okay, that was the good point, was big point though, which was separate okay, and all the ratings were above okay. Um, the city was rated highest on being courteous, um, was 4.3 out of 5 as the rating on being courteous. But the bottom line from these two efforts is, is to say that your customers want Fayetteville to be a thriving and safe city, and they want to be able to serve all of their customers well too. And that's true of your customers, and that's also true for your staff. And they did also suggest opportunities for improvement, and we've shared all those opportunities back with the relevant departments for them to make decisions about. Another thing I wanted to mention that we noticed, of course, is that different people and businesses need and want different things from the city. Some people want a return to in-person services, and some people want improvement and access to online services. Some people want to do it all on their own, and some people want more one-on-one support and handholding. That's perfectly normal, and we believe that the city's staff and services and offering can support those myriad needs. Now, to that end, as we moved into early 2022, we facilitated a number of conversations with the city manager's office and those relevant departments to identify and clarify, um, not only these six elements of premier customer service that you see on your screen now, uh, but also which types of customers would most benefit from these elements. And I know this font is a little bit small and hard to read, but just to orient you, there are six elements across the screen of premier customer service. These are actions that the departments in the city are undertaking at the time, so this was the timeframe of December 2021 through May 2022. And in the green boxes at the bottom, we're noting what the benefits are to which customers, um, making sure that we have covered the whole range of customer needs that you have in the city. Um, up in the top right, you'll see that as the city is taking these actions, it is keeping the key drivers of customer satisfaction in mind, and those are listed there for you. Also, I just want to note that during this timeframe, and I'm sure even through today, Development Services and Public Services and Fire are all continuing to identify areas to improve and additional opportunities to engage their customers. So our third step I mentioned in the project was to communicate back with the customers and to ask them for some more targeted feedback about what the city has done or is planning to do. Given how important communication and education is in your community and how it is to be, how important that communication is to these customers, we thought it was critical to circle back with them, um, and thank them for spending their time to give us the feedback, and also to share, um, the city's progress on their feedback. And so in the June-July timeframe of this year, we offered four virtual facilitated sessions. We offered those at all different times of the day and on different days of the week. And our purpose there again was to share back what we learned last year and what the city has done and will continue to do to continuously improve. We also did ask for some targeted feedback on the city's actions, and we captured a lot of ongoing continued questions that the customers have, and we shared those back with the city to respond to. Just a note about who was invited, um, so the Strategic and Performance Analytics Office invited 371 customers who had pulled permits. Um, and we wanted to note that during those contacts, many of your customers reported that they were good, uh, and they didn't need to come to these sessions, uh, or they also reported that they were too busy, um, to attend the sessions despite the multiple offerings. So in the end, we have 14 customers participate in three sessions. And here is just a brief, um, brief bit about the information that those customers shared with us in those sessions. They report that the availability of in-person support at the new Development Services Center is critical and will really be helpful if there are knowledgeable staff there to be able to answer their questions. Uh, we also heard that that was going to be especially important for customers who are continuing to struggle with technology because they understand that they can get help there in person with the technology, um, as well as one-on-one help and answers. Customers also appreciated the update and the information that was provided in these sessions, they appreciated the opportunity to ask questions and also the chance to share some ideas with us. Um, and the Strategic Planning and Analytics Office followed up with the customers who had unique and individual questions after the sessions, and also Development Services has added some of the frequently asked questions to the website to further their communication efforts with the customers. And then some of them, the last note here is that some of your customers really do want to help the city continuously improve, they're offering their time and their expertise, um, and, and of course, of course, they're offering to help, it's important to them, uh, it's their livelihood and their workplaces, and in some cases, their homes even. So we encourage the city as it moves forward to always remember those people and those businesses who have offered to help and who rely on these processes, procedures, and policies. And last, we just want to thank the city for allowing us to come and help it gather this information from its customers and facilitate it through the decision-making, um, sessions so that they can incorporate those insights into their work over the past year. Um, and we applaud the departments for their work and their, their real, real-time responses to the customer feedback that we've received. We also know that the city will continue to gather that real-time feedback from its customers and respond to it appropriately as it moves forward. And we at Zellows certainly look forward to watching the city's progress. So once again, thank you for your time and for your commitment to your community, and we appreciate you, we appreciate an opportunity to work with the city of Fayetteville. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilman Harry, you had a question?
Yes, and, uh, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, so if, if we are understanding this correctly, um, because this was a part of our UDO concerns some, some time back, whenever a customer comes in, a contractor, home builder, whomever, he or she can go to this one-stop desk, not necessarily needing to actually see the inspector or see someone in the rear to find out the process in which their, uh, plans are, um, you know, their draft, their, their specifications, anything along that line. This is, I mean, they can like just go straight to the computer with, I guess, a passcode and pop, pull up their information and find out the process of where they are. Yes, no?
Yes, sir, we will have a, a station set up right out front here, uh, it will be a, pretty much an information hub where someone will be there, a professional that would have the questions to be able to ask along the way from start to finish, um, they would either be able to give them an answer or give them a direct name of someone that can get them an answer. So instead of giving you a runaround from person to person, it'll be someone that would have a direct knowledge of that process that can actually link you with someone to get you that answer right away, instead of delaying that process any longer.
Okay, because that, that was one of the big concerns with some of our developers or, you know, our GCs, that when they came in, either the person wasn't there, or whatever the case may, may be. So this is somewhat of a, a one-stop shop for information on their particular item versus having to meet with a number of people. It all can be done right there every time they come in.
Do you want to speak on the process for that? Um, Dr. Newton will come up here.
Yeah, because if Dr. Newton comes up, he will, remember, we had this discussion whenever we were dealing with the UDO, and you were telling us, oh, we got this new thing that's coming, so I'm glad to hear that it's finally here.
And it, yes, sir.
But, but if I could, I thought that one time it stated that if they're, if they knew the number for their project, they could punch their own number in, in pull-up. I remember that discussion, am I right or wrong?
Your memory is correct.
Okay.
And it's been in place for about a year and a half. What we're continuing to do is expand that so that even more transparency can exist. Part of what we saw in this customer journey was that, uh, sometimes the property owners don't know, uh, they may not be hearing the same story that the, uh, the records show as to what's going on on a property, and this is allowing us to continue that process. We will, uh, any of you who have used our services over the last, I'll say, six months, have seen how we've operated in the back, where we have moved high-tops in to that area. As COVID, um, concerns lowered, uh, we brought some activities into the back that we had been wanting to do, those will move to the forward. Uh, it'll be a nicer environment, and we will have that interactions, the interactions that we continue to have, uh, both on a daily basis with the person out on the job site as well as in here. One of the things that I've heard, um, repeatedly, including a customer who was in the initial group but didn't want to come back, uh, didn't have anything in, in particularly called me on this to say, "I don't like technology, I want to talk to someone." And we, we said, "We understand that, we have that in place." So we realize that as much as the world is driving us certain spots.
Right, right.
We're going to do these other things too.
So my follow-up question then, for those that like technology?
Yes.
If they, are they able to do this process from their computer, uh, for their particular project?
The answer again is yes.
Okay, that's great.
They can do it whatever hour of the day they want to do it also, we won't see it that same hour, but yes.
Right, right, that's great, that's great.
Yep.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Newton, thanks, uh, Mayor.
All right, thank you, um, I just had a question, Ms., Ms., was it Allward?
Yes.
Yeah, how you doing? Thank you for, for your presentation. So this is something that we, we've talked about for several years, to kind of do, uh, random customer surveys or invite people who come in to interact to inspections Department to leave their comments randomly so that they can be truthful. Um, we had 371 in this sampling, how many people come in to use our permit and department in the course of a month or year?
That's a good question, um, I, I would say.
Well, Chris, one of the things that we, we can do, Mayor, um, we can definitely get you some metrics, but when we look at it in a variety of ways, one, we look at dollar value, we also looked in at the number of actual permits. Um, and, um, I don't know if they have, um, but while he's, um, to answer the question too.
Well, I'm not looking, looking for the monetary value, I'm just trying to see how many customers come in to do something that would have been applicable to their, uh, opinion about, uh, service in a month, I guess, or a year, you can do it yearly, how many permits pulled, I don't know.
You go with 1100 a month, 14,000 a year.
So 14,000 a year, we got 371 in this sample, how, how did, Ms. Stacy, how did you determine, um, this quantity, number one, and two, I see out of the 371, we had about 14 that actually participated, so how do we, how do we determine the sampling of this?
I can answer that for you, sir. Um, so Spaw actually ran the sampling, um, Development Services provided us a list for the whole year of permits that were pulled. Um, what we decided to, we knew we couldn't call 14,000 customers. Um, we did have analytics of sorting the data, um, from the highest pulled to the lowest pulled, we took our aggregate, which was about four average permits per person. Um, from that, uh, list, we went from the highest 10% to the lowest 10% and then a mid-group. And from that, we just randomly, uh, had it randomly selected, so it wasn't like we went handpicked one, or I know this person, I'm going to call this person. It was randomly selected, so we did the top 10, bottom 10, and the mid-section, and they were divided up between four of us, and we actually made each one of those phone calls. Um, so within that timeframe, we took about 370, for about 371 calls, it took probably sometimes two to three minutes per call. Um, sometimes customers wanted to talk, um, just to give us some input, or they were just explaining why they couldn't come. But we did randomly draw those names off of that list, which was a full list of all, uh, permits pulled from the city.
So I, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting to, and I, I think it's useful information, but you have 14 participants from the public, you know, and, and that would seem like a real complicated way to do it, um, just as a business person, you got a little survey comment box, you know, hey, what was your experience? And then you tally that up just to get an idea from people, or at the end of a phone call, press one to take a custom survey, you know, something, you know, seemingly simple.
Well, Mayor, we can do both, we can do both. So one was to get generated for focus groups, to actually have people come in where we could talk to them. Um, and Dr. Newton already does surveying, um, of customers, and as you, as you know as well, people who leave comments in comment boxes, usually they're motivated because they've done, had a really good experience, they had a really bad experience, and that may not be indicative of the silent majority of people who you never hear from, we never hear through, from, who come in, get their permits, and go home. Um, but this was designed to try to get a mix of all of those, um, so that it could be, um, as scientific as possible. But Dr. Newton's been doing surveys for as soon as he's been here.
Right, so do we have the, the results of that? I think that would have been a good part to see, that, uh, because right now, the results that are in this presentation are pertaining to this sampling, right?
That's correct, and what, and you're correct in the way that you have shared that information. This was, the idea was rather than those who are in that vast majority that have nothing to say, positive or negative, that didn't want to fill something out, this was an opportunity for somebody independent from us to take a look at it. But we have the surveys, and we continue to, uh, review those as people have put them in, and if we have something that is, uh, really troubling, I look at these, I make phone calls and find out. One of the things that I also do, uh, in that survey world is realize that customer surveys are actually now done two ways. So we have also initiated that when we have a customer, we are having our permit tax, our inspectors also rate them, so that we have information, so that when I get a phone call, uh, about a problem, I can also correlate it back to some of these that have come in, so that when the ladies on the phone are chewed out, cussed out about something, that's documented. When there are comments made that are completely inappropriate, that's documented. Forwarded one today, just, uh, so somebody could hear the types of things that they also put up with. The value of that is something that really is from the economics that has been done, where it's a two-way customer survey. So it can't just be that they have to receive everything that's hit at them, but giving our people that same level of courtesy back. So we've begun that, as you heard from Stacia, it is continuous improvement, we're continually looking at ways to improve. We know that we're doing well, and we know that we'll miss the mark, but we continue to try to make it better and better all the time. By having an outside group look at us, it's a way to say, okay, the bias is removed by them doing it. It was not a number that I would have worked through, it wouldn't have, it, it doesn't work to extrapolate it out, um, but it is what, um, was done, and in terms of their being able to get some feedback, that's what we got. As you, as you, Mayor, and members of council also know, we work a lot with the home building community and the Board of Realtors. Uh, we have regular meetings with them, we're the ones that initiated that because we want to know, how can we do better? And in turn, they've been able to share with us some of the same things that we've had of the frustrations that happened. So for what it's worth, uh, we're, we appreciate that the effort was done. I haven't introduced the three people who came up, if you don't know them. Um, we do have Dave Steinmetz, he oversees that division, uh, Jason Average, he's the chief building official, and Patricia Johnson, she's the supervisor for the permit tax. So we wanted to listen to the presentation, that's really why we're here.
Well, good to see y'all.
Mayor, one last, uh, comment that I would make, the next step for this, on our handoff, as you see here on the screen, is that, that continuous improvement, so the next phase that we're going to be doing is implementing, like you said, the survey, um, through is that, that continuous improvement. So the next phase that we're going to be doing is implementing, like you said, the survey through Survey Monkey. We're looking at, working with Dr. Newton and his team about putting that on the permit, so when a permit's actually pulled, there will be a Q R code or a link that will be attached to that, that permit. That they could actually, once they get that permit, they can actually pop their phone out and scan it. And then do that, and then we'll have that digital asset that we can go back and review. So that would be the next phase in our premier customer service.
Got you. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Well, great job, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Keep up the good work. We look forward to getting the follow-up information. All right, Council, item four point oh five, Water Supply Watershed Management Protection Text Amendment. Mr. Reeves.
Okay, so this will be a, excuse me, a brief presentation. This is dealing with some proposed text amendments to the Water Supply Watershed Management and Protection Ordinance, which is chapter twenty-nine in your Code of Ordinances. So before we dive into this, just want to specify that this is really a water, a water quality ordinance. This is not particularly pertaining to stormwater. It is more water quality driven in our city's drinking water supply. So basically, what is it? The General Assembly of the State delegated the responsibility to local government units to adopt ordinances and regulations designed to promote public health, safety, and general, general welfare of their cit- citizenry. The provisions of this chapter shall apply within areas designated as public water supply watershed by the State Environmental Management Commission. So we don't, we don't set what the water supply watershed area is. And basically, what it is, is it is a development standards for areas that are upland of reservoirs and surface water intakes to include buffers built upon limitations and runoff treatment. So there's different surface water classifications throughout the state of North Carolina, but basically, they are designations that are applied to surface water bodies such as streams, rivers, and lakes, which define the best uses to be protected within these waters, for example, swimming, fishing, and drinking water supply. Surface water classifications are one tool that the state and federal agencies use to manage and protect all streams, rivers, lakes, and other surface waters in North Carolina. Classifications and their associated protection rules may be designed to protect water quality, fish, and wildlife, or other special characteristics. Each classification has associated standards that are used to determine if the designated uses are being protected. So what do we have here in Fayetteville? We have a water supply class four, which is waters used for sources of water supply for drinking, culinary, or food processing purposes where a, a character is one, two, or three classification is not feasible. These waters are also protected for class C uses. Waters are generally moderately to highly developed watersheds or protected areas. So again, what is it? So it's basically broken down into two different areas in the city. You have the protected area and the critical area. And the water supply watershed boundaries, they exceed outside of the city limits. You'll see the protected area is the area that's kind of in the, the yellow or the gold. And the critical area is what is in red. So your protected area, again, these aren't specified by the City of Fayetteville, they're set by the state. They're areas adjoining and upstream of the critical area. They, the boundaries of the protected area are defined within five miles of and draining to the normal pool elevation of the reservoir or to the ridge line of the watershed, or within ten miles upstream and draining to the intake located directly in the stream or river, or to the ridge line of the watershed. The critical area is the area adjacent to water supply intakes or reservoir where risk associated with pollution is greater than from remaining portions of the watershed. The critical area is defined as extending either one-half mile from the normal pool elevation of the reservoir in which the intake is located, or to the ridge line of the watershed. One-half mile upstream from the intake located directly in the stream or river, or the ridge line of the watershed. Local governments may extend the critical areas as needed. So if you'll see, what are the two critical areas? They're upstream of the Hoffer Water Plant, and they're upstream of the Glenville Lake Water Treatment Plant. So we are proposing some text amendments to this ordinance. Basically, it's general organization and updates. There's some updated verbiage. Obviously, there isn't an inspections Department anymore within the city. So we're changing things like the inspections Director to the City Manager or Designee. We're changing the Public Works Commission to the Watershed Review Board. We're also, the biggest, one of the big things generating these proposed amendments are conforming with the Department of Environmental Quality's model ordinance. So there's been some definitions that have been added or changed to improve clarity. There were some minor changes to the authority and general regulations to improve clarity. There were minor changes to subdivision regulations to improve clarity. And there was also the addition of allowed, not allowed, use table and density average section. So there are certain things that are not allowed in the water supply watershed area. Another proposed amendment is in the, is, is for high-density requirements in the critical area. And this is kind of a zoomed-in area, a zoomed-in map of the critical area. So just breaking it down between protected and critical. The existing runoff control requirement is that there must be control measures to treat the one-inch storm. So you get an inch of rain, you've got to control your sediment and other kind of pollutants. The proposed runoff control requirements for the protected are unchanged, so we're still proposing one inch. But the critical is moved up to one point five inches, which is more along the lines of what stormwater control in coastal communities are. So if you develop in the critical area, you would have to provide runoff control treatments for one point five inches, not one inch. The, the driving factor behind this is you really want to mitigate turbidity runoff and polluting impacts at the Glenville Water Treatment Facility intake. The UPS, US EPA requires drinking water rules of having less than one turbidity. P W C maintains less than a tenth to, to improve water quality. So again, this is a water quality-driven amendment. And just to clarify, there is already provisions in the current ordinance that allows P W C to impose stricter regulations on, on here. So for instance, the, the tennis center that was, that is being constructed now, they had to, P W C put additional development requirements for that development, and they are treating an inch and a half versus an inch. So what are our next steps? We'd like to take this to a public hearing. We've got to do it not less than ten, but no more than twenty-five days before the date of the hearing, so we'd like to target the October twenty-fourth regular meeting.
Councilmember Mahndra.
I move to direct staff to draft the proposed text amendments as related to the Water Supply Watershed Management and Protection Ordinance and schedule a public hearing for October twenty-fourth.
As a motion by Councilmember Mahndra, seconded by Mayor Protim Dawkins. Discussion on that consensus, those in favor, show of hands? All right. Those opposed, there are none? All right, thank you, sir. Item four point oh six, pos twenty, twenty-three, council meeting dates.
Mayor and council, this is basically a housekeeping item that we have every year. You have for you in the C C A M, there's just one conflict for the N L C conference that takes place in Washington, D.C. We normally have a quorum attend that conference, and that's conflicting with a regular council meeting. So if you would like to consider holding that second regular meeting on an alternate date.
That's, that's March twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth, speaking now?
Yes, sir, for the N L C conference. So you could possibly hold the meeting prior to going to the conference on Thursday, March twenty-third. Or you could also consider holding that second meeting Thursday after you get back from N L C, which is March twenty-ninth. I don't think, Councilmember Jensen likes that idea.
She looks excited. So, so is that, is it twenty-third or twenty-second during the agenda briefing, going to the regular council meeting?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay with council? All right, it's, it's a, so.
So I will bring this item back to the next regular meeting for you to formally adopt the resolution.
Was it twenty-second or twenty-third, council? Twenty-third, that Thursday?
Twenty-third, yes, sir.
So everybody's on board with that, okay? All right, so you said you'll bring it back, Ms. Pam?
Yes, sir, to formally adopt the resolution.
So it means our phone is going to get all those different emails about adding something to your calendar. Okay, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Colvin?
Yes, sir.
While we're on the topic of making adjustments to our future meetings, City Clerk, was there any other adjustments regarding to start time for different meetings?
Yes, we had suggested that for the agenda briefing meeting that has been held at five o'clock. I know some members have an interest in moving that to start at four P M. That's the meeting we have once a month.
Well, that's kind of a non-mandatory situation. You, you had a question, Councilmember Mahndra?
What time do we receive the agenda packet? Don't we get that at four?
You said in the event of a four o'clock? It probably goes out still a couple of days prior, right, Madam?
The, the two I've been a part of.
That's really not an attachment for that, so. Yeah, four o'clock's gonna be tough on my side.
So the, the agenda briefing that we have once a month had started primarily to look at the planning items. And staff would come in with understanding that council had not had a chance to read all of them, and we would present to you those planning items and ask you if you had any initial questions. But it's totally up to, to the council if you would like to continue that or leave it at five o'clock. It's your choices.
I mean, Councilmember Jensen, I mean, you, you, you get with staff, and you haven't really been at the last couple of ones. I think they might be helpful to go a little bit earlier. Agenda briefing. So with that. Oh, I see. Can we have that put on the agenda as well, that we move those to four?
I guess.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Why?
No, my question would be, what was the city manager proposed? Is it feasible for him to have everything ready by four?
I mean, I'm sure he'll get in line with however, but Mr. Hewitt, you had an opinion one way or another?
I, I think it's important that we don't keep staff here. For me, it's, it's not keeping staff here any later than we have to. I think doing it during the workday for them is actually beneficial for everyone here.
Does she have a workday? Yes, Councilmember. Okay, so is there consensus to, because, Ms. Pam, did you change these to four based on anticipation of this conversation? Or what was that? Because it shows four o'clock on here.
Yeah, but the council has to vote on it.
Whose proposal was it originally, as well, Madam?
The, we have, I'm just trying to see. Yeah, we do have four o'clock on there. That's the proposal.
Was that a staff recommendation, or was that, that come from somewhere else?
Well, a, a couple of council members had asked about it.
All right, so, yes.
But the council will have to formally adopt the council, so whatever is your pleasure is what we'll put on there.
So if we're moving the meeting up from five to four, can we get the packet at like noon? Because I was going to ask about getting the packet at four and then having the meeting at five. I mean, I can't, I can't look at it at four if we're having a meeting at four.
Agree.
The, it is incredibly difficult to put the packet together. But if the council's wishes are that, again, the agenda review has traditionally been for planning items. We have not gone item by item by item. But if that's something that council would like to do, of course, we will just adjust our schedules as necessary. But we typically have not done that. The reason we do it for one meeting and not all three is that usually we try to plan, have all of your planning and zoning items on the last meeting of the month, which require significant public hearings, evidentiary hearings, and the like.
What was the, the whole purpose of this even coming up? What was the purpose of changing it? What was up to go to, to go to four or another time? I, I mean, I, I didn't hear that conversation. How was that proposal caused a couple of council members? Oh, okay, okay. I'm fine with it at five, but would however.
All right, well, it appears there's two dynamics going. Those who have work obligations ending that, and, but then also the interest, I guess, to end the meetings, which, as manager said, they're not as, as kind of detailed as some of the others. This is mainly planning, zoning, and other discussions. So is there consensus to change it to four? Those in favor of the change? Okay, those opposed to the change? Or leaving it as is? All right, so. All right, and you'll bring that back for formal adoption?
Yes, sir, with a five o'clock start for the agenda briefing.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Council item four point oh one oh. Councilmember request phase. Madam Clerk, if you could, start the timer and give the floor. Once it's there at five minutes, we'll give it to Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I am gonna yield my time just in case there's any questions that I need to answer. It's pretty much straightforward. I'm asking for support from our coun- our council to direct staff and to have a dialogue with the county commissioners in support of assisting them financially for homeless shelters and bringing back those recommendations. And again, there's no funding, there's no number on it, but just having staff directing them just to have a conversation to see if there's a way that we can support them, especially when it comes to expediting the location and the build of a homeless shelter. And I'll yield the floor.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Councilman Ingram spoke briefly last week about us going to the county commissioners, asking for funding for a homeless shelter. What would be our process on how we can behoove them to move forward so the city wouldn't have to do it? And if the city did do it, could we get the county to operate it? Some kind of way, we have to bring collaboration together to solve our homeless problem. I really don't care who does it. Let's just do something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll kind of just update you. Did have an opportunity to meet with Chairman Adams, Vice Chair Stewart, Airport Tim, myself, and manager, county manager, and they gave updates about where they are with that. They did suggest that they were in the process of still working with the hospital to do it. I think they were going to have Cape Fear take the lead in that. But as we heard tonight from Major Greider, Greider, they're in the process of building two hundred beds. There are ninety-eight beds on a regular basis. So I, I think that, I guess the request, if I understand it, is for us to commit to financial assistance in a process that may or may not expedite it. Because, were you proposing that the city somehow take the lead, or just be helpful with the county?
No, I was wanting council to direct staff into having a further dialogue with, I mean, I know I've had conversations with, with the commissioners, but nothing is set in stone unless we bring everybody to the table. Just like I sit on both of the boards, nothing can get done without support from council. And again, this is not put in a ballpark figure or numbers or anything. It's just simply having a conversation to see if there's a way that we can support them with the homeless shelter.
I don't, okay. Well, I don't know that consensus is needed. I think the, the manager and the county manager talk. That joint board, I was told, have you and Commissioner Stewart, do you all still regularly meet?
Yes, I sit on two different boards, but again, when you're dealing with the board, you have one person from. you have one person from the city, a person from the county, and we still need both boards on, on decision and policymaking. So again, this is just simply having a conversation, directing our staff to have a conversation with county staff to see if there's, you know, if we can support them and bring that information back. It's just informational purposes.
All right, any questions, comments, counsel? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm, I'm confused now. Because my question would be is how do we collaborate with the county to move anything forward?
The county reaffirmed the other day that they are in the process of doing this process with the hospital.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
And Commissioner Stewart said that she was asking for, you know, we, the conversation came up about a timeline. And, you know, roughly, they're still deciding on a site. And then they are going through the process of that. I think the city's role, I, I would like to see our day center open and operable as soon as possible. So if we have any additional resources or horsepower, we need to get that going. Because as he presented tonight, the critical part is the wraparound services that, that, that the people need. You know, shelter is just one component, which I think they're working on that. But this is council member's request, so I can't ask, I can't speak for.
I understand, Mr. Mayor, and I understand the importance of the coordinated entry. It's just that I think a lot of people are just tired of people twiddling their thumbs. I mean, we've been talking about commissioners and what they're going to do for the past years. It's time to put the proof in the pudding.
All right, any other questions, comments?
And I do just want to say again, this is a conversation, not putting a number in place, just for clarity. And I'm ready to take a vote if there's no more questions.
All right, and, and, go, go ahead. All right, I, I was just saying, prior to the vote, I hope during strategic planning, I do agree, and I, and I would like to, to commend Counselmember Banks McGlaughlin for her diligence in wanting to make sure resources are allocated to it. And I'm, I'm hoping that during strategic planning, we can allocate some dollars, maybe not full commitment on running a program, but dollars, real dollars, to the effort of homelessness. So, but I look forward to that. But because of that, I may not be able to support this particular ask because it's not clear. I think there's already engagement. But with that, I'll turn it over to the floor to Counselmember Banks McGlaughlin, and we'll ask for consensus.
Okay, that was my consensus.
Those in favor of the request? Show of hand? All right. All right, thank you. Moving on, item 4.011. Counsel received a request from the chancellor's office. And by the way, I know they're not here tonight, but like to commend Chancellor Allison and FSU for a number of, a number of things that doing to kind of help re, reinvigorate the area and the community. There was a quest as is enclosed in the packet that was submitted on September 2nd to ask the city to consider renaming Filter Plant Drive to Bronco Village Lane. And the letter request is in the packet. So this is something that wanted to bring to the manager to see what the process was for that. And being the, the largest institutional presence over there, you know, as they continue to expand the footprint in collaboration with the city right there with the, with the senior center east, I think that, you know, kind of moving positive change to that, to that direction. So the request is in there, it was just to, for consideration, the council to ask.
Question, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Whenever that is considered, and I think that's something that goes through the county, there's approximately about 40 total properties within that area. And my, my question is, will there be any subsidies for residents needing to change accounts or account addresses, business addresses? Just things along that line? What steps are done for, you know, for steps like that? Unless that's something that needs to be proposed at a county meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that goes. A business, I can see, I mean, you're saying for the time that it'll take for a resident to change his mailing address on a.
You know, mailing addresses, they may have to change addresses on different accounts that they have, that they are using filter platform, not just, just a mailing address, banking, phone, I mean, whatever address, whatever businesses they are using, cable, things along that line. And just, just a thought, I mean, just the same kind of typical questions that are asked when things like this are proposed.
Well, that's, that's a good question. I, I think tonight's request is to get consensus if staff will bring back the process. Because I'm not familiar exactly what the step-by-step process is, as well as answers to, to that and other questions if they are there. But tonight was just to see if there was consensus to, to have staff look into the consideration for it. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dean Hare is right. It's going to be very expensive for those 40 property owners. So I, I'm going to support this consensus motion to move forward. I think it would be wise for us to let the Fayette State folks know this is a county responsibility on street name-changing. And then secondly, the university may want to consider how, you know, they're going to probably get some pushback from the, from the residents in a public hearing at the commissioners' meeting when they vote on it. So, but you are absolutely correct, Counselmember Hare. This is, this is going to be an expensive undertaking. It'll take at least a year for folks to change all their banking info and mailing info and everything else out. So it's like moving.
Yeah, well, I think that, you know, I'm just questioning, I could see businesses with signs and literature and letterhead, but what is the expense on a individual? To, to call your bank and say, my new mailing address is 123 Bronco Lane?
That's right, and magazine subscriptions and everything known to man. If the, and, and the newspaper maybe, if they're actually.
I'm sure all the bill collectors will find the proper address. Their documentation too. You can take them. All right, well, my five minutes is down to 48 seconds. And of course, this is, if, whatever the procedure is for the county, the public hearings and all of that, not asking any of that to be mitigated. I think it starts with support of, one, the university, two, the city. It is a city street. But I think, as you, as you said, they handled a 911 in the GIS. So that's the request before us. All right, any questions, just comments? All right, counsel, those in support of, of the Bronco? Of the FSU request? All right, all right. Madam Clerk, that's, that cares. All right, all right, counsel. Good meeting. Most adjourned.